All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to get this council meeting started for April 2nd, 2019 at 5:01 PM. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Chenier, and Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
I do expect Councilmembers Warren and Ashby momentarily, but Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If everyone could please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you, everyone, today for coming today and joining us today. We've got a couple of recognitions beforehand. We're going to go ahead and start off with the first special presentation, recognizing Creek Week, April 4th to April 13th of 2019. I believe that's Councilmember Harris.
There we go. Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, every week, we honor the people who volunteer and work to clean up our riparian areas here in the city. You know, as a result of the homeless crisis, we have a lot bigger chore than we used to have. It's very important that we clean up our creeks, and so the people who volunteer to do this are really essential to the city. I want to give you an idea of some of the creeks that the volunteers work on. So it's Arcade Creek at Del Paso Regional Park, Laguna Creek, North Laguna Creek Park, Morrison Creek, the drainage canals, one at Orchard Park, Bannon Creek, Park, San Juan Reservoir Park, East and West Main Drainage Canals, Garcha Bend, Magpie Creek. Those are just a few of them. But without these volunteers, our urban creeks would not be as nice as they are. And even at that, you know, it's become a bigger chore. So we really value their effort, and I'd like to have Alta Tura come up to the podium and say a few things about the group that she's been leading for many years.
Hello. Thank you very much, and I'm here to just talk very briefly about Creek Week. And it's, the cleanup is Saturday, April 13th. We're still, we have some sites open for volunteers still, and we'll be cleaning man-made garbage out of the creeks. Councilman Harris mentioned the problem with the camps along the creeks, and so there are some areas we are not able to, it's not safe, so we're not able to clean those creeks that we used to clean. But we should have plenty of work for our volunteers to do, and we start our activities this coming weekend, and people can go to creekweek.net to find out about creek walks and other waterway-type activities. And we really want to thank the city, the support that we get from city parks and utilities. It's wonderful, and we couldn't do the cleanup without that support. We really, really appreciate the city's support, so.
Well, they support you, but you support all of us.
Partnership, yeah.
How many, how many years have you been doing this, Alta?
This is our 29th year.
29th year of volunteerism cleaning our urban creeks.
Yep.
Well, that's a remarkable effort, and I think on behalf of the council, I can say we acknowledge and thank you very much. So I have a resolution for you, and maybe we can get a picture.
Okay, great.[253.23][253.23](APPLAUSE).
Great, thank you very much, and I do want to thank you for also this wonderful bookmark here that says Creek Week, April 4th through the 13th, and it will use it nicely with this bilingual book that Councilmember Harris has brought over, Hola Dragones, Hello Dragons. Good to use today. So let's give another round of applause to Creek Week and for all of their educational efforts.[302.31][302.31](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Councilmember Harris, as well. Our next recognition, and fortunately, the organizers who worked diligently this weekend for the annual Cesar Chavez March could not be here today, but we do want to thank all of the members of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement for organizing the annual Cesar Chavez March. One of the things that Cesar Chavez fought for was equal treatment of workers, and today is Equal Pay Day, and I'd like to hand it over to our Councilmember Ashby, who wanted to make some comments about that, about today's date.
Thank you so much. Yes, so today is Equal Pay Day, which means that, and as you know, today is, what, April 2nd? That means this is how far into the year a woman, on average, would have to work additional days to make the average of what a man made last year. And so here are some statistics at the state level, these are state and federal statistics. If the annual gender wage gap in the United States were eliminated, so if we were all paid equally, then women could afford 13 additional months of childcare, 10 additional months of rent, over 70 weeks of food, or nearly seven more months of mortgage and utility payments. To every dollar paid to a white, non-Hispanic man in California, Latinas are paid 43 cents. Black women are paid 63 cents, and Asian and white women are paid about 72 cents. Women in California alone lose $78.6 billion to the wage gap every year. Imagine how this compounds over a lifetime and how it affects families. So it's just, you know, something that we all work on here in the city of Sacramento. This council has worked diligently to try hard to do audits, to do an annual report card, to look at pay equity amongst our ranks, and we have room to improve, but we have made progress, and I think it's important to acknowledge days like today and continue that dialogue and keep talking about it, representation matters, and today is Equal Pay Day, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Councilmember Ashby. We're going to go ahead and move on to our business of the day. The first item is our consent calendar. It's been moved properly by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Councilmember Chenier. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have eight for public comment. I do want to remind folks, this meeting is being video-streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. Please fully complete the speaker slip with name and any phonetic clarification and preferred pronoun, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is at the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request the person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cellphones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. A cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are also available from the clerk. So, public comment on the consent calendar, their first speaker is Mac Worthy, then Jim Hoopd, then Don Murphy. Mr. Worthy is speaking on item three, and the rest of the folks are on item five.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Worthy, for coming tonight.
Budget meeting, this wasn't on the agenda. And my question is, are you auditing equipment or income? Which one are you auditing? The meters is equipment, and income is what's in the box. Which one are you auditing? Now, you can say, somebody here know, but I had to go all the way through and write, fill out information, public information. That is information, because you are 501(c)(3). That information should be automatically kicked out. You've got people here can kick that information out, just like that, but you refuse to, because people may know what you're doing.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Hoopd on item five, then Don Murphy, and Will Kennedy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Guerra, council members. I rise in support of item five on your agenda, which is an addendum to the EIR for the Sacramento River Parkway. The city council and the city made a promise to its residents 44 years ago to complete the Sacramento River Parkway. It's a long time to wait for the completion of that parkway. Tonight, you're taking one very small step in a litany of steps that will still be required to finish the parkway, but I urge you tonight to approve that addendum so we can continue the progress that we've started to this point. And let me say thank you to Councilmember Jennings for the tenacity he's shown us in finally pursuing the completion of this parkway, which will be an amenity for the entire city of Sacramento and the region at large. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Vice Mayor, can I make a comment?
Hold on one quick second, sir. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jim, I'd like to just thank, you talked about tenacity in pursuing the Sacramento River Parkway. Well, you've been one of the people who have championed this through the years. We're actually on a roll, you know, with the Del Rio Trail, the SAC Parkway, and hopefully the Two Rivers Trail, we're going to get connected, and it certainly seems to be the way of the future and the will of the council to create that interconnectivity. And you're right, we've been talking about these trails for decades, so it's very gratifying to see them move forward. Anyway, thanks for your efforts, Jim.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. The next, if you could, the clerk, please read the next public comment.
Next speaker is Don Murphy, Will Kennedy, then Cynthia Shalit, all on item five. Don?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Well, as I look out over the room and see all my neighbors in green scars, I feel like General Custer.[718.35][718.35](LAUGHTER). So much for that. Okay, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Don Murphy, I live at 7260 Pocket Road, and I own property under the levee. The reason I mention that is there has been a great deal of confusion about the private property owners on the Sacramento River, and in my deed and in the conversations I have with the State Lands Commission, I don't own the levee. I own the land under the levee, and the recreational easement rights are not available at this time. There are maintenance and flood control easements on the property, but there are no recreational easements. Make no mistake about it, I'm opposed to the bike trail. In the report that I read, 156 pages, I noticed that there's a lot of time given to the endangerment of the Swainson Hawks, the Elleberry Beetles, the riparian areas, but a lot less was mentioned about the impact on the property owners in the Pocket area. They're all pretty obvious complaints that we all have, those people that look at it like I do. Crime, trash, the potential for homeless camps, they already exist down there. I know that there is a great motivation to have the parkway, but I want people to understand that until that parkway happens, and in the event that I have to forego my recreational easement rights to the city, it's still private property, contrary to the continual articles that have been written in the Pocket, Inside Pocket magazine, which have poisoned my neighbors to think that I'm a bad guy. I'm a cooperative person. I've never run anybody off the levee in my property.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Sorry?
Thank you for your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Thank you for being here today and for recording your opposition.
Okay, I understand. By the way, to show you how fair and balanced I am, I have an extra ticket for the Kings game tonight if any one of my neighbors in the green scars.
Our next speaker is Will Kennedy, then Cynthia Shalit, then Ann Strosvall.
Good evening. My name is Will Kennedy, and I'm the president of the Pocket Greenhaven Community Association. I want to start off by thanking my fellow community members, who, many of whom are behind me right now, who've been fighting for the Sacramento River Parkway, not for a few years, but for decades. However, when I have the conversations with some of my neighbors who've been fighting for the parkway for so long, oftentimes, the conversation turns to, well, it would be nice if it's done someday, you know, or maybe, maybe in a few years. The item in front of you, item five, is a great step forward. It would make it so that the Sacramento River Parkway isn't something that might happen more so in the future, but it'd be a concrete step towards making it happen sooner rather than later. In addition, I'm a teacher in the Pocket as well. I often have conversations with my students about how much they enjoy the Sacramento River Parkway. However, at the same time, they ask me, Mr. Kennedy, is it okay if I go past that fence? I hear there's a good fishing spot over there. Mr. Kennedy, how great it would be if I could ride a bike all the way from the Pocket along the river to Old SAC. And I tell them, be careful, it's not appropriate yet, but I also tell them at the same time, though, the progress is being made by not only our city council, but especially by our Councilmember Jennings. Please support item five, please support the Sacramento River Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Cynthia Shalit, then Ann Strosvall.
Hello, city council members and mayor. I'm Cynthia Shalit, I was a resident in the Pocket area, and I'm a resident in Land Park. And for many years, since I moved here over 30 years ago, I've wanted to be able to bike along the River Parkway, along the beautiful Sacramento River, and I think with this step forward, I think with all the research that this group has done, we've legally found a way that we have had a right to have access to the top of the levee and have that area, the barriers removed, so that we can then enjoy the river like everyone in the city should be able to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Strosvall, Wesley Lum, and then David, or Dale Claypool.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I also speak in support. I am the chair of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, but I'm here tonight in my personal capacity. I've lived in the Pocket area for over 20 years, and I go up on the levee every day. I would note that Don Murphy, oh, I guess he left, but he's my neighbor, and he's always been a gracious neighbor. We talk a lot about wanting the city to be livable, sustainable, healthy for us and our kids and our grandkids, and this is a wonderful opportunity to take a step in that direction. It'll open up walking and biking opportunities, and over the long term, hopefully help reduce traffic and congestion, and it's the right thing to do. The rivers are one of our greatest assets here in Sacramento, and this is a fantastic opportunity to enhance that asset. Thank you, thanks for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments.
Next speaker is Wesley Lum, then Dale Claypool.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have been a lifelong bicyclist, starting as a child, but as a college student and a professional, I've been involved with transportation. And my first initial opportunity for research was to be a major co-author and researcher for the California Bike Way Planning and Design Guide in 1971. It turned into guidelines for the country, and when I was able to work for Caltrans for 31 years in various aspects of planning, safety, traffic, and research, I was able to bicycle to work for 31 years. I've been retired for eight years, and most of my friends that I bicycle with live in the Pocket area and in Land Park, as well as other friends that live down there, and my mechanic. So I am constantly going on the city streets, as little as possible, because most of the time, I try to ride on the American River or the Sacramento River bike path system. So I appreciate the resolution moving forward, and pray for all of our safety so that we can bicycle in a more safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dale Claypool is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Good evening. My name is Dale Claypool, I'm a resident of Land Park. Jim mentioned that the, this project's been under consideration for 44 years, or at least it began 44 years ago. Forty-seven years ago, I began commuting downtown by bicycle. It's a fairly easy ride, four miles, had bike lanes on the roads, and I was very fortunate. A lot of my colleagues I worked with weren't quite as fortunate, they lived further out. I was always encouraging them to ride, it's fun, easy, fast, cheap way to travel, but a lot of them were concerned, especially further out, that they were concerned with the safety of the streets. And with this project, I think we're going to pick up a lot more riders coming into town. I know the city is doing a lot these days, both to improve the bicycle access, but also to address climate change, and this is one little positive way we can also address your actions in climate change. So I encourage your continued support for the project and look forward to an I-vote.
Great, thank you very much for all of those who came to testify. I also, I think I saw Parks Commissioner Lavelle from District 7 here. Since there are no more folks signed up to speak, and there's no members of the council wishing to speak, it's been properly moved and seconded by Councilmember Hanson and seconded by Chenier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Measure passes. Congratulations, Councilmember Jennings, I know you've been working a long time on this item. We're going to go ahead and move on.[1271.58][1271.58](APPLAUSE). We're going to go ahead and, thank you very much for being here today. We're going to move on to our next item, to item, first item on the public hearing calendar, item number 20. And I see our fabulous staff, Jennifer Donlin-Wine, here prepared to present. This item came before the Law and Legislation Committee with much debate. I'm glad that we're at this point here, and I know there were some concerns and questions coming from Law and Legislation about equity, and I'm hoping that you'll include those in your staff comments.
Vice Mayor Guerra, yes, I will.
Okay, good, very good. Well, let's, let's get going here, and we'll get going. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Guerra, council members. I'm happy to be before you to present the proposed revisions to our shared rideable business regulations in Sacramento. What that really means is shared rideables are shared scooters, shared bicycles, and maybe hoverboards one day when they come to the city of Sacramento. Why is this important? I wanted to give you an intro to the mobility context of what this is. When we think about new ways of moving people around in the city of Sacramento, we want to think about things like climate change, getting people out of single occupancy vehicles, sustainability for the city, growth for the city. As we continue to grow and add more people, we need to find new ways to move them. We want to be equitable in our investments, and we want to be concerned about public health and safety. In part of developing these regulations, we did a lot of outreach, so we went to the Act of Transportation Commission twice, we went to Law and Legislation twice, and we also went to the Disabilities Advisory Commission. We also worked with our local mobility stakeholders, such as Walk Sacramento, SABA, Resources for Independent Living, and a number of our business organizations, such as Downtown Partnership and the Midtown Association. We also worked with organizations like the Society for the Blind, the Handle District, and others. And of course, we worked with our partners in the community, the business operators, such as Jump, Bird, Lime, Razor, Clever, there are many of them. We had numbers of conversations with them about this. So coming out of all of that outreach and interest, we also did a lot of outreach to our peer cities in the NACDO community, which is the North American City Transportation Official's organization, and we learned from cities that already had high numbers of these devices. So the issues and interests that we are looking at from the city perspective, from a staff perspective, are block sidewalks, which are common in many cities, improper parking, sidewalk riding, scooters are not allowed per California law to be used on sidewalks, how to provide these devices to our lower-income communities, and to ensure full cost recovery so that we are not subsidizing these businesses. We heard from the operators that they request that we lower the fees and that we use a per-trip fee option. And then our local stakeholders are pretty concerned about ADA accessibility, making sure that we had paths of travel for our users with disabilities, to provide parking for each device, that that parking not be provided on the sidewalk as much as possible, to consider the saturation point, when we have too many, what is the right point for bikes and scooters, again, to ensure our sidewalks are clear, enforcement around parking and sidewalk riding, and again, equity. So there's a lot going on, and there's been a lot of iteration on this, and it has been a compromise moving forward. When we went to Law and Legislation, they asked for that we provide a greater framework for equity, that we develop a framework for reduced fees in our lower-income areas, that originally, we had proposed a fee for obstructing the pedestrian path of travel at $25. Law and Leg asked that we reduce that to 15, and then provide a framework for introducing the devices so that we don't wake up one day to find 3,000, 5,000, or 10,000 devices in our city. So in response to that input, we made those proposals and those revisions. So we're working through our administrative procedures right now, which will give the city manager the discretion to limit the number of devices. Right now, we are looking at 250 devices for the first-year operation every quarter for the vendors that are coming in. We're requiring that the devices, whether it be a scooter or a bike, they be parked at a bike rack or a city-designated area. We will be piloting painted drop zones, like other cities have done. We're actually working through that process right now and hope to have them in the ground in the next four weeks. The operators, because it is their, their business need is generating the need for parking, that the parking will be funded through their fees. We did reduce the fees, and can highlight that for you in a little bit, but originally, we had proposed a full-cost recovery year one. Staff proposal is actually to go full-cost recovery over years one and two. We did reduce the fees for our opportunity in low-income areas to incentivize that they go there, and then we did reduce the fee to $15 for a device blocking the right-of-way. And as Vice Mayor Guerra asked, we did include a number of visions to the code, recommendations to ensure a more equitable distribution of the devices. So the current proposal, the current regulations have no equity requirement. Under the new regulations, what we're proposing is, is that 20% of the devices must be distributed to a low-income community. These are these blue areas that you see on the map before you. This is the SECOC designated disadvantaged communities, it's what we also use for our grant funding, so we went with that program. So 20% of the devices must be deployed within the blue area. They can choose one, one area, or they can distribute them out greater, it's up to that business. The operators must have an equity plan that includes promotion of the devices to our disadvantaged communities, that they provide a discounted membership plan, and that they strive to provide cash payment options for those that don't, that are unbanked. And then the operators must report on a monthly basis how they're promoting their businesses to the disadvantaged communities. So the proposed fees. These are the fees that we're proposing to, so the first, it's a full-staff recovery for staff time, first-time permit for staff to review the permit application, then an annual renewal, be less because we've already reviewed it before. We're looking at a parking and infrastructure fee, this fee will pay for the needed parking. We're proposing that the first year be 25 cents per trip. We are estimating three trips per day per device, which is consistent with what other cities see. And then year two would be a 10 cents per trip, per device. The vehicle fee, which will cover staff time for monitoring the businesses, and then for parking meter revenue loss within, it would be $136. In the opportunity areas or disadvantaged community areas, that would be $104. We want to incentivize going out to those areas. And then again, the other fees include disrupting the path of travel, $15, and then if we needed to impound, though we don't want to, but if we needed to, it'd be up to $55 a day. What do these fees cover? So the parking and infrastructure fee, which I went over already, will cover the installation of the bike parking. We are going through a data-driven process to identify how we'll need or where we'll need that parking. Our fabulous IT and GIS staff have already started to develop for us a dashboard so that we can see where trips are ending, and we will use that data to help determine where we need parking. And the vehicle fee will cover staff time for monitoring the program, and then for parking meter revenue loss within the core where we have parking meters. The proposed fee structure, the current fees, which are under the current ordinance, which Jump is currently operating under, actually costs, would cost $875 per device. Jump is now subsidized through the SECOC program to cover a lot of those costs. Under the initial recommendations that we brought before Law and Legislation in the Act of Transportation Commission this fall, we propose full-staff recovery, full-cost recovery for year one, so the cost would have been $547 per device for year one, $190 for the years thereafter. But we heard that there was interest in bringing those costs down, so for the staff, current staff proposal is, is to bring the costs down, distribute them over year one and two. So year one, per device, is estimated $305 per device. For years two and on, it would be $241 per device. That would still have us at a net shortage of parking spaces, but we were to cover that by the end of year two. The staff costs include the parking spaces, which is $355 per device, $32 per parking spit, per device for parking spaces, plus the covering of approximately one FTE, a one-time employee, per staff time to recover. This is consistent with other cities that have anywhere between 1.5 and 3.5 staff monitoring their programs. We're looking just to have one person on that's covering the shared rideables. Our fees are comparable to other cities. Our fees are comparable to other cities, so we did a review of other cities and what their fees would be. Oakland, for example, is $204 per device. Santa Monica is quite expensive at $515 per device, and then you can see the others exemplled there. Our fees are in line with some of the cities. We're definitely more expensive than some of the other cities, but we are looking at full-cost recovery. And before I wrap up, I'd like to invite Jennifer Gore, the city attorney's office, to read one thing into the record.
Good evening.
Good evening. Let me see if I, I was hoping to use the overhead, but I don't think I'm capable.
We'll put the overhead here in one quick second. There we go.
So, sorry to do this from the dais. We had been optimistic when we were originally putting the ordinance language together and thought that we would be through with the process by February 1st, and so we needed to make one correction in section 5.18.210, and to change February 1st to now read May 1, 2019. So all the other redlining you're seeing is what's included in the packet now. We're just updating the date that's currently February 1, 2019, to be May 1, 2019. So, given that we're here a little later.
Great. Thank you for that reading into the record. Like any item that is new and innovative, it's going to be a continuous work in progress. I do want to thank all of our city staff and our city attorney's office and our public works team for getting us to this point. I know Councilmember Hanson has worked diligently on this issue, and I appreciate his willingness to be flexible on this. I think we're almost there, but before we go to public comment, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hanson to see if we can't even tighten this up even more before we go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll reserve my comments mostly for after public comment.
Thank you.
But I wanted to make a motion because there's a couple of things that need to be clarified. And again, I'll address some of the stuff after the public comment and give fuller remarks, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the item with these three minor changes. In section two, to remove the per-trip 25-cent first-year fee and just make it a flat 10-cent fee, starting year one and continuing that. Secondly, to have a preference for infrastructure, for flexible infrastructure, particularly painted parking where that's reasonable and prudent, to help us balance out. And the comment I would just make, because most people don't understand that issue, we've learned a lot from the Jump program, that sometimes we put in hard infrastructure in places where it's not being used, and it's a very expensive thing. So we want to kind of have a more learning strategy and flexible infrastructure provides that. The third piece is really just that we need to come back in six and probably 12 months with updates about how this is working. There are a lot of concerns about certainly how vehicles will be deployed to opportunity areas, how we'll deal with blockage of the right-of-way, the pedestrian path of travel in particular, and then just some of the behavior things that have come up through our dialogue with the public and with operators. And this will give us a chance to sort of understand whether our program is effectuating good behavior, whether or not our partners are delivering on their commitments, and then how it's going from our end. So those three, with those three amendments, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance, open and close the public hearing with that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. It's been moved to open and close the public hearing, and was there a second? Not, I'll second the motion here. The motion, and we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back for debate. Yes, Councilmember?
You can't close the public hearing until you hear the public.
Very good point. Thank you for the point of order.
Open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing, and then we will come back. Thank you for that point of order, to be correct.
Vice Mayor, point of clarification.
Yes.
I'm not clear on what the amendments to the motion were. What page are we talking about in this?
Here's one quick second here. We're going to go one member at a time. There's been a request to clarify the motion. Councilmember Hanson, without comment, can you clearly state the motion?
One of them affects the actual document in addition to the change in the date that the attorney read, but in section two of the resolution that sets the fees, we would just remove the first-year fee, that's 25 cents, and have a flat 10-cent per-trip fee. That doesn't change the ordinance, it just changes the resolution. And then the other two are direction to staff to prefer flexible infrastructure that we can use to learn from. And the third thing is just to come back in six months and 12 months to update the council on progress around our goals related to equity, management of the public space, and the other items that we can talk about more after. So it doesn't, it doesn't change the item overall except for that fee item.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. So the motion has been to approve the staff report with the change of the fee, so that is a flat 10 cent for the first year and ongoing year, and then there was staff direction to deploy flexible infrastructure, and then report back to the council both at six months and 12 months. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to public comment. I'll also refrain my comments till after public comment until we hear the public. If the clerk could please call the members who have signed up to speak.
I think you have eight speakers signed up. The first is Mac Worthy, then Angie Manetti, then Matt Bumaro.
For the reason that I try to make comments for education, I rode a bicycle from sixth grade to my seventh-grade year in school, every day, rain and shine. That not count that ride to the milk dairy, to and from, for my little job. It's not my potato, and I don't see a profit in it. Now, we got these red bikes laying somewhere everywhere. One's in front of my house with a plaid tie. People, what you doing? It's fees. I know the city need income, but this is a disgraced way for income. If you help people go into free enterprise with the property that you giving away, you would cover that loophole up, but you won't. You go to a bike. Now, I'm 77 years old, what I look like, bike? Do you see that people going to post and, by the cemetery? People, that hamburger hit a car, we got some dead senior citizens over there. And furthermore, a bike, from what I gathered years ago on the law, a bike is not permissible on a person owning it in a crosswalk. If you get hit in a crosswalk with a bike, you just got hit. That's a pedestrian crossing, not a riding crossing. So, you know, these things have to be researched and put out there and try to help people. Yeah, my granddaughter rode it. My granddaughter's up here, going down in San Francisco State and Nurse, she ride it. That's her business. But, you know, my grandson is the car sharing thing, and I say, you know, I'm going to drive my own car. Mass transportation. We don't even have mass transportation. Hook up with the connection that you can get on one in a time and go to the grocery store. You design that thing from the state back to Rensska Door, that's all you done. You can't go to the airport on mass transportation. You wasting time, people. Wake up! This city is suffering. You ain't got no jobs. You don't have no $100,000-a-year jobs here in this city. And there is an opportunity for that, but you refuse to accept.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Worthy.
Next speaker is Angie, next speaker is Angie Manetti, Matt Bumaro, and then Will Kennedy.
Good evening, Ms. Manetti.
Hi, good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Angie Manetti, here representing Lime. Lime is the largest stockless micro-mobility operator in the world. We certainly do appreciate Councilmember Hanson's amendment to lower the per-trip fee and to revisit the city costs after six months. We've been working very diligently with the city for several months, and the latest change is definitely progress. Just to be clear, we certainly are not opposed to paying fees. We're not opposed to operating in a fully regulated market, and we're not opposed to the city to recover costs for, for any costs that you incur to enforce and to regulate this type of mobility. Our biggest point of contention with the proposed regulations is the requirement to pay for installation of one bike rack for every one of our devices. I think there is an acknowledgement that two of our devices could fit at one bike rack, yet, you know, we are, we are not bikes, we are scooters, and our devices cannot and will not lack to bike racks. We believe that the installation of those bike racks for scooters is an excessive cost, and it won't meet the, it won't meet the city's goals to ensure safe parking out of the public right-of-way. I think it's incredibly encouraging to hear, though, that there is prioritization to painted areas. We believe that will be exponentially less expensive, and we still believe that can meet the city's goals to ensure these devices are not in the right-of-way. We are hopeful that the six-month review will focus on the necessity for construction of expensive, will focus on the necessity for the construction of expensive bike racks not needed to park scooters out of the right-of-way. This has been a long process, and we certainly have appreciated all of the attention and resources that have been expended to sort of make sure that this is a workable model. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate the dialogue.
Thank you for your comments. I'd also like to welcome our city manager back, Mr. Chan.
Matt Bumaro, then Will Kennedy, then Alicia Prego.
Good evening. Vice Mayor and Mayor Garrett and City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Matt Bumaro. I live here in Accolade Flats since 2018. My girlfriend and I love the jump bikes and scooters. However, a fine of $15 for blocking a sidewalk or riding an electric scooter for a city of our size is actually too small of a fine compared to a, for a complicated central city and suburban area. The fine would be sent to a transportation network company, which would then deactivate a rider's account until the fine is paid. The, also SAC Park would be able to do a traditional fine for breaking the law. The city would benefit from added revenue to hopefully help our less fortunate citizens and to reduce our homeless crisis that is affecting every single district in our city. I recommend a no vote for tonight and to send it back to committee for a further review.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Will Kennedy, Alicia Prego, then Eric Crane.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Will Kennedy. I'm the chair of the Sacramento Disabilities Advisory Commission. Last September, Ms. Donlin Wyatt sought out our commission's input on our city's ride-shareable policies. We shared the concerns we'd been hearing from Sacramento's disabled residents that jump bikes were being left in the middle of sidewalks where they were becoming impassable obstacle for our, for our disabled citizens. We're very thankful that Ms. Donlin Wyatt has kept our concerns in mind and continue to reach out to us as stakeholders as the ride-shareable policy, in regards to the ride-shareable policies that are being discussed today. Having policies that make sure that jump bikes and e-scooters are left in designated spaces as well as a small fee goes a long ways to ensuring that our disabled population here in Sacramento continues to have free and open access along our sidewalks. We are very proud of our city officials for having the foresight to ensure that ride-shareables, as they're rolled out, that they do not impact our city's disabled population, and we urge you to approve the proposed amendments to Sacramento's shared rideable ordinance in front of you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Alicia Prego, then Eric Crane.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Alicia Prego, and I'm here representing the e-scooter company, Bird. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today, and first, I do want to acknowledge Jennifer's work tirelessly with the vendors to, you know, find a workable proposal. And also want to thank Councilmember Steve Hanson for the motion. I think coming into today's council meeting wasn't sure, you know, where we would be at and, you know, if it was a viable option for Bird to come into the city of Sacramento. So, you know, the burdensome fees and the restrictive parking has always been at the forefront of our discussions with the city. You know, we appreciate the reduction in the per-vehicle fee from the last version of the draft regulations. We think that the flat rate of the 10 cents will also help in being able to operate within the city. And also, you know, I do want to note for the record that there is some work to do around the parking regulations, and I think that having the six-month, 12-month look back will help with that to identify whether, you know, it's appropriate, and then also whether we have the right fees in place. And so I definitely want to urge the council to adopt the proposed regulations with the proposed motion, thank the city, and hope that we can, we look forward to the potential opportunity with working and helping to achieve the city's climate action goals.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Prego.
Eric Crane, then Brandy Tuzon Boyd.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and City Councilmembers. Eric Crane, Downtown Sacramento Partnership. We appreciate the opportunity to share our support for these ordinance amendments regulating shared rideables, and we're eager to see investment in new modes of transportation and programs that will improve access to our downtown core. Shared rideable businesses offer exciting opportunities for visitors and workers to utilize active transportation options like the bikes and e-scooters we've seen all around downtown while reducing vehicle miles traveled. We believe the proposed ordinance amendments strike the proper balance of encouraging new operators while minimizing impacts to our active urban core, and our compliments to staff in the outreach process on this issue. As we move forward, we want to emphasize that it's critical that these bikes and scooters are docked in designated spaces to avoid public health and safety impacts that can overwhelm a city as new vehicles and companies are deployed. Where these vehicles are parked is just as important as the access to them. We urge you to approve this proposed amendment and look forward to continuing to work with city staff to ensure success. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a question here, Mr. Crane, before you leave.
Just a clarification for me, is when you talk about the amendments, are you talking about the motion on the floor, or are you talking about the staff recommendation?
We were talking about the initial staff recommendation. I believe in briefly texting, we are not opposed to the amendments, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brandy Tuzon Boyd, then Kiran Kumar.
My name is Brandy Tuzon Boyd, and I am the vice chair of the city's Disability Advisory Commission. I concur with the comments made earlier by our commissioner chair, Mr. Kennedy, and I wanted to share with you that people with disabilities represent at least 13% of our community. The few blocks from the freeway to City Hall, this evening, I passed three jump bikes parked incorrectly, therefore blocking access to those in wheelchairs or with limited mobility. I support amending the ordinance, which will change fees related to shared rideables within the city's limits. It is my hope that levying fees associated with these infractions will be an incentive to those who use jump bikes and hopefully e-scooters to park these shared rideables appropriately, and not on sidewalks, in curb cuts, or on wheelchair ramps, all of which I have seen firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Kiran Kumar, and then Austin Hayworth is the final speaker.
Hello, Vice Mayor Garrett, members of the council. My name is Kiran Kumar. I am the executive director of WAC Sacramento, a community-based planning and active transportation advocacy organization operating here in the Sacramento region. We support the staff recommendation in front of you today. While we see scooters and other shared rideables as a necessary part of our climate change-fighting portfolio, those ambitions need to be met with common sense regulation. The city has worked closely with us to develop these regulations, and at the end of the day, we are not concerned whether a shared rideable system costs $1 or $500 per device. We want to make sure that these systems are reliable, accessible, safe, and do not create an undue burden on city resources. We trust, we trust the staff's analysis for full-cost recovery and urge the council to consider that as a primary goal, given the already under-resourced capacity of our transportation department, as well as the lack of sufficient parking throughout the city. The ordinance in its current form helps to reduce sidewalk clutter and obstructions of the pedestrian right-of-way while installing necessary infrastructure to support these modes of travel. We also support limiting the amount of devices that can be deployed all at once. Knowing that a major part of these businesses' economic strategy is brand awareness, I'm glad to see the city taking proactive steps to reduce the amount of devices that are all released at once. I also just don't believe that multi-billion-dollar companies are unwilling to come to Sacramento based on a 15-cent change to the per-ride fee, but that's up for the council to debate. I would also address Mayor Hanson, or Councilmember Hanson's amendment that we should consider flex parking maybe in the downtown area, but given the lack of infrastructure for actual bicycle and scooter parking throughout the rest of the city, why don't we maintain the requirement to actually build the parking based on the fee in those outerlying areas? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our final speaker is Austin Hayworth.
Mr. Hayward.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Garrett and councilmembers. My name's Austin Hayworth. I run public affairs for Uber in California, and that's included the opportunity to work with Jump and manage policy and operations here in Sacramento. First, I want to thank Councilman Hanson and city staff for working with us. I think the reassessment of the fee is a good thing for the marketplace here in Sacramento. The success we've achieved here in Sacramento has really been a focus of many other cities we've looked to expand to across the country, and many cities are looking to replicate the success where we've experienced here in Sacramento. So the fact that we're having, moving towards a policy that's at a more reasonable fee level, I think is going to allow us to continue to expand and experience the success we've seen here so far. Here's a couple notes for considerations moving forward. We've been working with city staff. staff on elements of the ordinance that include, um, credits for the, the work we've already done. We launched here in Sacramento almost a year ago today, um, and we run a, a program about 1,000 bikes, um, and scooters in the, the broader Sacramento area. So, that, that consideration of the infrastructure we've already contributed to, I think, is, is going to be important to enable us to continue to reinvest in the management of the on-the-ground fleet that we see today as well as, um, the economics as we look at expanding into more communities beyond the existing geography. So, I appreciate your consideration of those things going forward and we look, we look forward to continuing to work and partner, uh, partner with the city and, and on the success we've had so far.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more speakers. We're going to go ahead and turn it over to the council here. We have council members, uh, lined up to speak. Uh, Councilmember Hanson.
I, I was on the agenda. Is Patrick Blackshire Foundation of Future Success?
Excuse me, sir, but...
The agenda for Patrick Blackshire for Foundation of Future Success. I don't know if I'm too late.
Uh, I'm not sure which item here. We're going to ask if you can confer with the clerk here and they'll get you some information. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Hanson.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, this has been a very interesting journey we've been on and I particularly appreciate, uh, Ms. Donlin Wyatt and your whole team, uh, as well as the Public Works leadership because this has been a long and winding road. Um, I'll try to string together as many cliches as I possibly can, but it all began with, uh, Bike Share and we had an ordinance before us in 2017, if I remember right, and, uh, one of the things we were doing is we were on the leading edge of that issue for California and we saw the dockless bike systems pop up in other cities. We were trying to get ahead of that and we crafted an ordinance that we were trying to hit that mark and we, we ended up including shared rideables more broadly in it as a, at the last minute. The council may remember that. As the world's evolved, our ordinance hasn't evolved and this is a space that has changed dramatically. Um, it's almost like scooters are the horseless carriages of our era and people are freaked out about them in ways that are sometimes, uh, understandable and other ways that I think are based on the fears and the experiences of other cities where, um, the dockless scooters and bikes in particular have been completely unregulated and they end up all over the place. Um, and I think in our experience thus far, um, Jump has been a very good partner. All Jump users maybe have not been the best riders that we want, uh, in riding on sidewalks and in leaving their bikes in the path of travel and in being discourteous, but we anticipated a little bit of that. Um, and I think largely our experience has been much better than other cities. Um, a lot of inexperienced riders choose to begin riding bikes again as adults on electric bikes and electric scooters and I think we have a huge education process that we're going through. But the, the work that we've done and it started really a long time ago with Bike Share, um, it actually started in 2011 or '10 before I came here through the Air District and then, uh, through SACOG as we moved that project forward across Davis, West Sacramento and Sacramento. But, uh, this focus on equity and when we looked at updating our ordinance to properly regulate scooters, that was the number one goal. How do we get, um, equity for communities that are disadvantaged, don't have access to lots of good, um, mobility options, um, outside of fixed transit, whether that's light rail or bus? And these options have been supremely embraced when we look at the data from Oakland, uh, and some of the other cities we've studied. People like Bike Share, they like scooters and particularly people in disadvantaged communities seem to really embrace them as a affordable option to get around. And so when we designed this ordinance, it was to both, um, protect the public's interest by getting, um, bikes and scooters off of sidewalks, from having them park in places that weren't appropriate. Um, and, uh, despite the comment from the gentleman who talked about the fee, I think he left, um, the $15 fee is actually plus the state surcharge of $12.50. So, the reason we lowered it from 25 isn't because we thought 25 was a bad number, is because, it's because that fee with the state surcharge became 37.50. That seemed like an inappropriate fee for the public for leaving a bike in the wrong place and so we lowered it to 15 and so it becomes 27.50 with the state surcharge and that is not something we can change through our own law. And so, uh, the state takes that revenue, we don't get that revenue, but the, the rider on the other end is who pays that. And so 27.50 seemed a lot more reasonable. We want to change behavior, but at the same time, as we've gone through this process and there have been so many iterations, I probably can't remember all of the details, we've tried to structure a requirement that 20% of the fleet be outside of the central city, but we're hoping through the amendments I made today to lower the first-year fee to provide flexibility on infrastructure. A, a bike rack in the way that we've done in the central city where we take a parking space and we do all that stuff can be very expensive. Uh, when we had the one outside of Vic stolen by some neighbors who didn't like it, it ended up being a felony although we have not prosecuted that. Um, but because of the value of the racks, the cost to engineer it, the cost of replacement, the cost of labor, it is very expensive. And so I think we will not see, contrary to maybe Mr. Kumar's point, and he wrote a great op-ed in the News and Review about why we should be cautious but go forward on this. I don't think in disadvantaged communities, we're going to see as many scooters in particular go there if we put a huge infrastructure cost on them, which is why I, I hope we can embrace this idea of flexible infrastructure. Um, we caused through the Jump, um, process, a lot of very expensive infrastructure to be deployed in the places we thought people would want to be, but it turned out their behavior patterns were different. We got some of those really right, we got some of those mostly right and there's some we just got totally wrong. We have racks that are very expensive that we spent regional dollars, uh, CMAC money on and some Jump money and they're just not being used. And I think one of the lessons from that waste of precious infrastructure dollars is that a flexible approach allows us to be nimble, to see where people are really going to be using it and then, uh, both through staff, uh, vendors, neighbors and council, we can come up with a better plan to use that limited resource more effectively. Um, I don't think that this particular iteration is going to be perfect. I know that, um, we are still going to see people behave in ways that we do not, um, approve of, riding on sidewalks, um, leaving things parked inappropriately. I think it moves us in the direction to prevent those. I also don't know for sure that our equity theory about lowering the cost of entry to our market will mean that more than 20% of those fleets go elsewhere, but I think the encouragement, and we designed a discount, that if you leave the central city, your fees are reduced. And now with the, the additional change to remove the first-year hire fee, that we will see, um, vendors decide that they want to serve, um, South Sacramento, Meadowview. They want to serve North Sacramento. They want to serve Natomas because they won't want to deal with what's going on in the central city, the high cost of infrastructure and everything else. And I believe while we've set a floor, they will exceed that floor and, and go to communities who really will embrace this. Um, and, and then what we'll have to do is in that six and 12 months when we come back, we'll have to continue these conversations because maybe WALK Sacramento and Saba and others will say, "We missed a piece of this" or "This piece is working really well, but we've got to come back and tweak it so we get even better." And I think that's kind of this next iterative step. So, two years ago, we, almost to the day, it seems, we adopted our first shared rideables ordinance. Now, we're adopting our second and it wouldn't surprise me if in two years or less, we're back here updating it because this, this sector's evolving so fast. Um, but, um, Ants Dosball was here earlier who left, these vehicles, these electric vehicles have dramatically helped us reduce our carbon footprint, um, of which most of our carbon being admitted is from cars in the transportation sector. It, it really cleans that up. If we're going to hit our climate goals, which is, um, something we're working through, but carbon neutral by 2045, we will have to have much more of these kind of vehicles. Um, and it's what our public is craving. People vote with their feet and particularly, um, on things like scooters. When Jump launched their first foray, we've seen a tremendous amount of use. And again, not all of that's been perfect, but I think with these amendments, we'll certainly have a better equity program, we'll have, uh, better protections for people with disabilities and seniors, we'll have parking options that we don't have now, and we have an opportunity to continue to refine this program. If we don't adopt this ordinance tonight, we'll continue to delay, we'll continue to only have one operator, I bet. Um, not that Jump is bad, Austin. I think Jump has been a phenomenal partner, but we like competition. I think it makes us better and we'll end up with more people having a chance to have access to this really important mobility option. I also believe that this puts us at the forefront of cities nationally with well-thought-out, well-regulated programs. Um, our program is being looked at by the city of San Diego where their number one campaign issue in their mayor election is people being upset about scooters and wanting to ban them. They didn't have any rules in place when all of these devices dropped and they're dealing with the fallout of it. I think that we have a chance here to do what Sacramento does best, set good policy, continue to refine it, let our staff continue to work with folks and let us revisit this in, in the amount of time we need. And so I'm really pleased, uh, to be here. Thank you, Jennifer, again for your team. Hector, you're the very proud director of an amazing department and I appreciate all that work and, uh, I'll close the public hearing just for the sake of Mr. Harris's point.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Han, Hanson. Uh, it's been, uh, we've closed the public hearing, but we still have items, members on, uh, the docket listed to speak. Uh, Member Ashby.
Thank you very much. Hey, Neil, can I hand you these and would you help me out with those on the overhead for just a moment? The, uh, the one on top there first and then I'll switch to the one underneath it in a second. Uh, so, a couple thoughts from me. First of all, it's, uh, thank you to Lawn Ledge and to Jennifer and Ryan for your great work on this and there's a lot that's good about this ordinance. For example, I'm a big proponent of the safety pieces that you've put in place and, uh, having just got back, by the way, thank you for bringing this vote this week instead of last week. I wasn't here. It was originally slated for the week before and I really had some things I wanted to say, so thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the discussion today. I think District One plays an important role in the future of what happens here and I'll get to that in just a moment. But, while I was gone, I was in San Diego and Santa Monica and several coastal towns and the scooters are everywhere, right? I mean, in San Diego, I could see how it has become the number one issue. Ocean Beach is a plethora of all, every brand that was mentioned here and then some. And so, trying to make sure that we keep that safe in Sacramento as we move forward and, and herd the cats as best we can, which is the hard part. You guys have done a, a great job within here. So, I too, I probably am a little bit where WALK Sacramento is. I'm more concerned with reliable and accessible and equity. And the second piece is I want to thank my colleagues on Lawn Ledge for trying very hard to create an equity plan and, and considering it. The map that I have up there, you saw in Jennifer's presentation, the purple part is the part where there already is service and then the blue hashtag parts are the parts of the city that have been identified as equity opportunities. So, um, as we ask these businesses to choose to serve in our city, they can choose to have a little bit lower fees in the blue areas. It's not true that anywhere outside of the urban core, they get lower fees because most of my district and most of Rick's district are not. Lower fees just because it's outside of this urban core. Um, you'd have to be in the blue hashed area, which is great, except for that obviously if the ask is for them to do 20% beyond, it's not likely that they will get all of those blue areas or even most of those blue areas. And of course, from a business standpoint, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that the most likely area to expand would be adjacent to the purple. So, the best opportunities there are in Districts Five and Six, uh, because they do not force you to cross a river and because they are already adjacent to the areas and they are in the economic incentive zone, so you would get a little lower fee, which is fantastic. Can you please switch to my next map now? No? Thanks. This is a map of the council districts. Doesn't have really anything to do with jump bikes, but the black line is the same line that you saw on the other map that identifies where these bikes and scooters are already located in our, really in our central city, but primarily Districts Three, Four, Five and Six. They do not touch Districts One, Two, Seven or Eight at all and I don't believe even if you add 20%, it's likely at all that they will get to any of those districts. So, here's where, I'm going to get out of my soapbox for just a second. The last year on this council has been a challenge for all of us because we've had some traumatic things happen and we've all had to sort of look at ourselves and say, "What am I doing about this? What am I, as a council member, what am I doing about this to make this city better, to serve areas that have challenges, to look at systemic communities that have been systemically left behind? What am I doing?" So, I can speak only for myself here, but one of the things that I have challenged myself to do is bring whatever strength I have to looking at equity in our city. So, when we adopt an ordinance like this one, are there any unintended consequences that would leave communities behind that are the same communities that historically have always been left behind? And I feel like one of my strengths on this council is to be able to look at policies and think about how they will be implemented. It's something I pride myself on over the last few years. And I believe that while this ordinance is a great start, it doesn't go far enough and shouldn't be adopted today in its current form because it does leave primarily Districts Two and Eight out completely. And even if you were to say, "Hey, we really want you to go into those areas with your equity program and the 20%," they, the providers would have to have some way to connect back, like where would people be going in those districts? Would they connect to downtown? The goal here is, does somebody who lives in Meadowview have the same opportunity to jump on a bike, literally on a jump bike, right, and ride infrastructure through our city to work in Midtown? Could a person who lives in Pocket Greenhaven jump on a bike and ride it into Midtown? The answer right now is no. And I believe after this ordinance is passed, the answer is still no, because it is very unlikely that they would go into those areas. Those areas are going to be a little bit more difficult to serve too, because they're going to have to have a whole different set of services out there to go pick up bikes and scooters and return them to where they need to go. If, if it's not congruent to the urban core, there will be additional costs for them as service providers. And so from, I have met with some of the providers, I have asked them what they think about this and they have told me that it is very unlikely that they would go into these districts, particularly Two and Eight and Seven. I will tell you that for myself in District One, I believe that I can probably get them out there anyway. But here's why. Because I have additional funding resources, a transportation association, some additional CFD dollars. There are things I can do to probably incentivize them coming to District One. So, then why as council member from District One am I opposing this if I can work with this policy, which I can? Because it still leaves behind the communities that we always leave behind. And my commitment over the last year to myself and to this dais has been to look at these policies as they come across through the eyes of people who are in Meadowview and Del Paso Heights and whether or not they are actually going to reap the same renaissance benefits that people in the urban core and people in East SAC and people in Tahoe Park and people in Curtis Park and people in Land Park are receiving right now. And I think the answer to that is no. I don't think we reach them. So, I, I understand that the first phase of this, the core, the piece that's done where the blackout line is now, was subsidized by SACOG. The problem I have with that is, it was actually District Eight and Two all along that probably should have received the subsidy, the incentive for the businesses to work there. And now, when it's time to expand and the subsidy is gone and we're raising the fees and the prices, the likelihood of these businesses moving out into Districts Two and Eight and Seven and really to the far reaches of Six are far less likely. Would they come to District One? Yes, because I can probably come up with a financial incentive to match what happened with SACOG in the urban core. But that can't be how we work as a city. That's not fair. That's not equitable. And I don't think a plan should move forward that doesn't treat the entire city equitably. And I think there needs to be a plan in place. There needs to be a proposal that comes forward that shows us more than just a requirement for 20% and a slightly reduced fee in the few hashtagged areas there that not only encourages, but ensures that this renaissance from downtown of transportation makes its way to Meadowview and Del Paso Heights and I won't support it until it does.
Great. Thank you, uh, Member Ashby, Member Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, well, um, I like the plan. I like where it is right now. I do think it can be better. Uh, I know there's been some attempts to, to make it, uh, more, um, suitable for in court, later incorporation into other parts of the city. for later incorporation into other parts of the city. I wanted to maybe ask of staff and maybe my colleague, Mr. Hansen, how the map actually became what it is now, and if there is opportunity for some expansion, and maybe what some of the ideas are to include some of the areas that Councilwoman Ashby had just spoken.
We'll ask Ms. Donlin Wyatt to respond, and then, or Councilmember Hansen, would you like to?
I think, Mr. Warren, that's a great question. This, this process has been tricky, partially because, like so many things, we're not actually funding this. We don't own this system. So, getting to design it is different than public transit normally, because we want the, the companies that have to sort of be viable to help us figure out how to do it where we're covering the equity areas, which is why the original map for the central city that we developed with Jump was to, along the lines of a business plan that was created through Secog to allow the system to be operational in Davis, West Sacramento, and the City of Sacramento in that, that core area. But what we've done is built upon that and expanded it quite greatly. Jennifer, can you go back to your, your slide? And so, this, these blue areas, and I guess I would just say that when we say 20% of the fleet has to be outside of the, the core area, it has to be in Del Paso Heights, North SAC, parts of Tahoe Park and South, and then, South Sacramento. Those are the areas that they have to be in. When we set the fees too high through infrastructure costs or the per-ride fee, what it means is they're less likely to deploy in those other areas because they can't make their money back. And so, by reducing the fees, we are sending a strong message that they need to deploy in those areas as well. And that's also why we reduced fees for those particular blue areas. The other piece of it, though, is I feel like this is a learning process. And we've heard specifically from at least one of the companies that they would not want to serve the core. The core is already saturated. Jump has done really well, and they own most of that market, that they want to launch in other parts of the city, like Oak Park, South SAC, or North SAC, because they think that is an untapped market that has a great potential to develop loyalty, goodwill, and ridership. Now, as much as we want to be good at business up here, I, I don't know that we always know how to run some of these complicated things. And so, I'm, I'm very open to the ideas that you might bring, Mr. Warren, or Ms. Ashby. I didn't hear any particular changes recommended to the proposal. But I do think is, if this passes, you know, and I'm, I'm happy to carry forward ideas that you might have, or Ms. Ashby might have, or Mr. Carr, since District Eight was mentioned, or any one of you, because we need to get people out of their cars. We need to get them onto transit. We need to give--
Mission. You believe in the mission.
Huh?
I believe in the mission, but I also believe that the people most underserved here are the ones who need it. And, but I will say, too, that people come from other
parts of the city to work in the central city. A lot of the people who I see using these scooters, they're not necessarily people in business suits. There are a lot of young workers. There are people who are coming from other parts of the city. They don't want to pay for parking. And this is a way they can take transit, or maybe Uber or Lyft into the central city, and then they get on a bike and they go. And so, it, it's part of a larger system. And Jennifer, I don't know if I missed anything, but that's the intent. And if, if it doesn't work in six months, I think we need to add another layer.
Sure.
And if it doesn't work in 12 months, then we have to revisit the whole thing.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Well, Mr. Hanson, I think, I mean, I like the way you responded to the question. And I think, you know, obviously, you understand Councilwoman Ashby's concern mine. I'm sure Councilwomen Carr and Jennings have similar concerns. But I do believe that the central city is unique, you know, and I believe that it does have--
Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, I forgot one piece. And I think Mr. Gera was going to bring this up, but there is a million dollars left at Secog. And Mr. Gera, Mr. Jennings, and I have been coordinating, because I'm the alternate on Secog, about whether or not they could deploy some of that resource for our underserved communities to get the systems in. And so, we, we have to have that conversation with the Secog board, but we've identified that resource as a, as a tool to deliver mobility in the disadvantaged communities.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Sorry, Mr. Gera, for taking--
Very good. And so, you know, and I want to say particularly as it relates to District Two, because, you know, in my view of the city, District Two is probably one of the most unique areas in the city, because we have ranches, ag land, you know, I have, we go all the way almost to Carmichael, or, you know, very, to the far eastern borders out to near American River College. And so, it is, it is a very unique part of the city. But I do think there are pieces in District Two that are very appropriate and would connect very naturally to the central city and the surrounding areas. And so, I would hope that we would make, for those of my colleagues that are on the Secog board, you'd make it a priority to have that discussion, and then to find out ways we can continue to connect some of these more disadvantaged parts of our city to, to this program. I was going to ask also about the 20%, but I think the 20%, whatever resource is available out of that 20% as well as this hopefully additional million dollars from Secog and, and some of our city resources if necessary, will help make some of these connections that I think we, I'm hearing the intent to do anyway. I, I was very concerned, like Councilwoman Ashby, and, and thought I was on the fence and quite possibly not going to support this because of the exclusion of areas that were, were mentioned. But I'm going to support it now, and I understand what we're trying to achieve. And I believe that with my colleagues' support, we'll get there very shortly. So, unless staff has anything else to offer, I'm okay.
Thank you very much, Member Warren. And I, after everyone speaks, I'll give the direction on the Secog funding. Member Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think it's important to realize that this is not a publicly subsidized transit system. This is a private business model trying to make money in the, in the City of Sacramento, all the while encouraging all of the goals that Councilmember Hansen elucidated. Councilmember Hansen and I served on the Bike Share Committee for, what, the last four years, I guess. And, you know, so, we worked on Jump from the beginning, and of course, the proposal changed remarkably over the years. We finally settled on the electric assist model, and I'm, I'm glad we did. You know, we've, we've got something that's going well. But it was a big experiment. We really didn't know what kind of pool we were dipping our toes into. We had to originally create a core area, a geofence area, if you will, and it was much smaller than it is now, because we had to start small to prove that this business model could work in this city. It turns out, it was adopted with gusto, which is a great thing for all of us. But it's still a big experiment. And I, I want to commend staff on coming up with a fee structure that I think can, can make us whole and still allow entry into the market without oversaturation and without an abundance of scooters laying around. People have that fear, because it's happened in so many municipalities. It's also important to realize that as we move into areas outside the core area or the expanded geofence, the business model still has to prove itself. We don't know what kind of usage adoption will happen in more outlying areas, and neither do the providers. So, encouraging their business model in those areas is laudable, but we can't mandate it, because this is not a publicly subsidized transit system. That being said, Jennifer, I want to ask you a question. If we did drop the fee from, from 25 the first year to, to simply 10, what does that mean in terms of full-cost recovery? You know, what would be the ramifications of that? Because I know you arrived at that number for a reason.
Councilmember Harris, thank you for asking that question. So, we anticipate with the cost reduction from 25 cents per trip for the first year to 10 cents per trip the first year, that we will look at full-cost recovery by years three or four, whereas, under the staff recommendation, at the conclusion of year two, so by year three, we would have full-cost recovery.
Well, I appreciate that. So, that puts us somewhat at the disadvantage. And is it your opinion that that could lead to the kinds of problems that happened in other municipalities if we hold off to full-cost recovery until year three or four?
Without outside funding, we won't be able to provide the number of parking spaces, one parking space per device, unless there are other funding, there's other funding available, like the mention of the Secog dollars. I estimate if we had 3,000 devices come into the city, which I maybe is reasonable, that we would be short approximately $800,000 for year one for the parking, but we would have to phase that in. So, the additional funding from Secog or other sources would be very beneficial.
So, in other words, more subsidy would keep us whole in the short term?
Correct.
And lacking that, not so much?
Correct.
Well, that's an important point, I think. So, we're trying to strike the balance between enabling a business model and not getting caught, caught up with a lot of headaches that the city has to pay to mitigate. Personally, I prefer the staff recommendation the way it is. It gives me a peace of mind that I'm not sure I get with Councilmember Hansen's ideas, although I very much appreciate the fact that he thinks about this stuff a lot and is, you know, very skilled in this kind of policy crafting. You know, I'm not sure it will work, but what I do know is that we were very cautious going into it the first year of Jump. And it is working well, because it is subsidized. You know, if we, my sense is that the council member's proposal here creates a little bit more risk than, than I would like to take, and I would be more inclined to support the staff proposal. The, the providers will find out what the market is as they move farther away from the core. Obviously, there's a lot more destination spots in the city center. Now, will people use these shared rideable devices as commute devices? I think to a certain extent, yes. In fact, we already know that from Jump, that people would be happy to go from Tahoe Park to city center. And certainly, if we get the Del Rio Trail built, people will go from Meadowview to city center, and they'll be happy to have a jump bike to do it. So, the market is going to be there, and I believe that the providers will figure that out, especially as greater availability comes up, like the Del Rio Trail and other connectivity that make bike riding safe, and especially scooter riding. My own personal opinion is it's not terribly safe way to get around. But again, that's a personal opinion. I wanted to ask you also about Councilmember Hansen's idea about, instead of requiring a parking, you know, a rack space, one per, per device, what about the flexibility of doing painted areas for parking? I mean, I like the sound of that flexibility. It does sound like that could be a valuable tool, and I want to know what your feeling about it is.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. We're actually going to be piloting a number of those in the coming weeks. We're going through our first-ever design process for those, and we're having them reviewed by our ADA coordinator, because we want to make sure that they are ADA compliant, so people who have visual impairment don't stumble upon them. So, we're going to pilot a number of them. We don't know what the costs are yet, because we have not yet implemented them. We, we expect they'll be less expensive than a traditional bike parking area, but the, the initial time to go out and identify the location, then have staff go out, the, our signs and markings crew to actually create the painting. There'll still be costs associated with that. We don't know what those costs are yet, though. And we do know that other cities are, other cities are piloting them. We don't know the successfulness of them yet.
So, I, if I got it right, a thesis that Councilmember Hansen was making, that if we're more flexible about ways to return these devices, we could save money, and therefore it would cost less to be made whole for full, full-cost recovery.
Bingo.
Bingo. I got a bingo. It's a good idea, quite frankly. And I agree with, with Steve also on the fact that some of our bike racks aren't positioned exactly where they would best be. Well, is there a problem to moving them?
So, for the ones that were installed by Jump, Jump owns the encroachment permit to hold that location. So, we would have to collaborate with Jump, moving them, and figure out how, how Jump would pay for the costs, for the labor to actually move them. If they're city racks, our crews can handle the moving of the racks and moving forward.
I have a sense of how many Jump racks are not being utilized fully, and how many city racks are not. But it's something that we should discover.
That would be a lovely data to have.
You know, I mean, we should have data on which racks are, are being situated in a great spot and which ones aren't, and come up with a mechanism to make change. Because I agree with Councilmember that flexibility in making these devices returnable is paramount, you know, to, to a functioning system. And it affects the amount of money we need for cost recovery. Both things considered, that being, all that being said, I still think that your cost proposal is the more appropriate to move forward. And, you know, while I appreciate everything that Councilmember Hansen has offered, I would like to make a substitute motion that we just simply uphold the staff report as written and adopt the resolution as written, and see if I can get a second.
Okay, there's been a motion on the, on the table here. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Carr. We're going to continue on to the speaker's list with the substitute motion, which keeps the staff proposal at 25 cents per trip. Member Shanier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hello, Ms. Donlin Wyatt.
Hello, Councilmember Shanier.
You're having a good time. So, a couple things. I'm not going to go long here, but I want, I want to clarify, the, the pricing proposal that you brought forward is basically one bike rack stall, whatever you want to call it, per device?
It's not one bike rack per device. It's one parking space per device.
Or parking space, rather.
So, each bike rack would hold two spaces.
Okay. And so, if you went, and I just want to kind of translate 25 cents to 15 cents, so you're losing about 40%, would we lose 40% of the spaces?
Correct.
And so, what would, so that would be, and was your 3,000 the number that you're using, including current Jump, or is that in new devices?
That's in new devices.
So, potentially, we would lose, if we got 3,000, we'd lose about 1,200 bike stalls or bike spaces.
That sounds about right, yes.
Is that my quick math?
Yeah, whole, you know.
Okay. So, I, I want to say, so a couple things. I, I'm, I, I think overall, first of all, I think you guys are doing a great job. And I have also been in San Diego and other cities, and the number of devices laying around is ridiculous. And it doesn't really promote the feeling that you want in the city, and it makes it difficult for those who might be disabled to get from where, where they are to where they're going. So, I think we really need to focus on that. I'm, I'm willing to back Mr. Hansen's motion on this and move forward, you know, with a caveat that we'll be looking at it in six months. And if we find that we have devices laying around as they do in some other cities, I think that's where we can revisit the pricing structure and see. I don't know that we would, would we have contracts with these organizations that would prohibit us from increasing the, that pricing?
Councilmember Shanier, no, there would not be contracts, because these are just businesses operating in the city. So, they would hold a business permit, which is an annual renewal. So, we would expect that just as Jump has to renew their permit in May, these operators that were coming in would need to operate a year after, or up, do their annual renewal a year after. So, we would, we would only be able to ask them to change the fee structure at their renewal if the fees were updated after a year period.
We would be where we are for a year.
Correct.
And then, the following year, if we have enough experience and we need to make a change, that's where we would do it, or somewhere in there to let people prep for that. Okay. So, I'd be okay with that. I, I have a lot of concerns about not putting the racks or bike spaces, whatever we're calling them, in. I've gotten more and more complaints about it as we've gotten more devices. And so, as we steadily have seen, have, I've steadily seen my emails and calls rise about this. I don't think I'm at that point of urgency yet, but I, but I think that we need to track it really carefully, and I hope my colleagues will be doing the same thing. So, that's a prime point. I, I do want to just add one point here, that when you look at the original map, and this kind of goes to Mr. Harris's point also about, this is a private business. But when you look at the map, when you go back further than the map that was put up, that Ms. Ashby put up, the original drafts did not include Oak Park. And I think there was a reason for it, which was the companies didn't think that ridership would warrant putting jump bikes in Oak Park. What they found has been the exact opposite, where Jump Park, I think, Jump Park, Oak Park is, we can rename it for the right price, though, where Oak Park has been really one of the busiest jump bike centers in the city, other than very much the core downtown. So-- So I don't want to underestimate, and given the fact that this is a private business, and the private businesses who are in the audience and are interested in this are going to go where the ridership is, there's no question. So I would say, you know, for Oak Park, what it's proven is that these folks wanted Jump bikes and are using them. I think the same thing will happen in Meadowview, the same thing will happen in Del Paso, and it's something that we can watch very carefully, that 20 percent or not, if people are using them and the ridership warrants that, there's going to be bikes in all the neighborhoods that we have in the city. So I just wanted to put that in. I was really pleasantly surprised when we first started seeing the results in Oak Park. I think we were all surprised, we shouldn't have been, but I think it's something that we can expect in some of the other underutilized areas as well for, as we see this now.
Thank you very much, Board Member Hanson. Before I go to Board Member Carr.
Shanier.
Thank you, Mr. Shanier. Before I go to Board Member Carr, Board Member Harris wanted to clarify his motion.
So, Councilmember Carr, thank you for giving me this opportunity, not that you had a say in it, but I wanted to amend my motion because I believe that a couple of the things that Councilmember Hanson brought up are very valuable. So my motion would be amended to adopt the staff proposal, but including Councilmember Hanson's inclusions about the flexible parking and also bringing back for revision in six and 12 months. I still actually think that the fee structure, as you proposed, gives us a margin of safety. It could be that it doesn't work, and I think in six months, we can say, you know what? If we're preventing other operators from entering the market and tapping into the market, and we've created a monopoly inadvertently, we could revisit the fees at six months and see if we want to drop to 10 cents.
Thank you.
So that is my amended motion, and it would need a second.
Thank you, Board Member Harris. I'm going to go to Board Member Carr, who made the second to your motion, and to see if he will continue to second your motion.
I was just seconding your motion out of courtesy. I didn't want you to die out there alone.
You know, I appreciate that, Larry.
Not seconding the motion would go much faster here, but Board Member Carr.
First of all, I appreciate the discussion, and I really appreciate Councilmember Ashby's concern about some of the areas that have been underserved, and how do we find ourselves in this situation? It happens one small vote at a time, and after years, after decades, you end up where areas are totally underserved. And you can look at each individual vote and not complain about it too much and not pick fault with it, but in the end, we get all of these underserved areas. And also appreciate being able to hear from Councilmember Ashby on this. I think she articulated very well the genuine concern, and if we had not delayed this discussion a week, we wouldn't be privy to it. So I really think that when a councilmember can't be here for whatever reason, and they like to participate in a discussion on a particular item that they have some serious concerns with, then we should accommodate that councilmember and postpone the item for a week. Our calendars are never too busy that we can't do that. It all comes down to a couple of things, and one for you, Mr. Vice Chair, you said you're going to address it later. Secog, are we going to be able to get dollars to close the funding gap if we reduce the infrastructure fee?
That's a prudent question, and one that I would leave to our board members who represent us at Secog to answer. Member Shanier.
It would require a vote of the Secog board. I don't know, I haven't had the discussion with staff about what their plans are for any of that money. I'd certainly be more than willing to advocate for it, and we can see where it goes. I was texting with one of the Secog staff members, but I'm not sure at this point, there's no guarantees on it. I mean, this is a board of the whole region who want to see things. So, you know, we have done Jump with West SAC and Davis. It's been a really good partnership with the three of us. I can't, I don't imagine that even if we can get some money, we would be able to get it all, just because we have other localities that are also doing the same experiments, but it's something that Mr. Jennings and I certainly could advocate for.
Thank you, Member Shanier. Member Carr.
I'm trying to reconcile two competing thoughts in my mind. One thought is that expansion of the bikes will happen in areas that are contingent with the areas that are already being served. And another postulation out there is that there are companies willing to go to other areas that don't have to do with downtown or the areas that are being served now. Can you help me reconcile that?
Councilmember Carr, as private businesses operating in the city, staff recommendation is that we can't mandate citywide businesses operating in the city, but what we can do is incentivize and require a percentage. This is very similar to our car share program. So our car share, our floating car share program that we have requires that 20 percent of the floating cars be in our very same disadvantaged communities to incentivize that. I'm not sure how, without subsidy, we could require operators to be throughout the city.
Yeah, that wasn't really what... What I was asking is, one assumption is that these Jump bikes or ride share, bike shares, will naturally progress from the service areas that are being serviced now outward because that's the easiest way to serve them, the easiest way to deploy. The other assumption is that there are companies chomping at the bits to go out to areas that are not being served, and because they think that the downtown core is over-served, perhaps. Help me reconcile those two things.
I don't think I can, Councilmember Carr. I'm not sure how these businesses operate. I'm sure we could ask some of the operators out there, but I have not actually heard about operating outside the city, and I'm not sure I understand their business model well enough.
Okay. So we really don't know how it's going to expand. We don't know if we have the money for the infrastructure. Tell me a little bit more about flexible infrastructure. I know you answered this question before, but how does it look?
Councilmember Carr, it is a painted area. This is not the best picture, you can't see, but the flexible areas are painted designated areas that are for the self-locking shared rideable devices, so, because they self-lock. So it's unlike my private bicycle that I need to lock to a bike rack so nobody steals it. You don't need to lock these to a rack necessarily, so we're creating places for them to be that are outside the pedestrian path of travel, but there doesn't, so they don't interrupt business operations that they're ADA compliant.
Just paint a spot on the ground and say, put the bike in.
Right now, our initial design is a white box with a P for a parking and a symbol of a bike and a symbol of a scooter.
Okay.
Larry, if I can add really quickly, so in the painted areas for Jump bikes and the scooters, you could just leave it there and it's locked, so nobody could take it, right? You don't have to lock it to something.
Right.
So basically, this is where we want you to leave it.
Well, why do we lock the ones here?
Why do we?
Yes.
We can ask our staff to answer that question?
Yeah, I don't know.
The current code actually requires that it be parked at a bike rack, not locked to a bike rack. However, folks have been bicycling for years, and they've been trained to lock their bikes to devices, to racks, and so I think they've continued the pattern. However, we only require that it be parked at a bike rack, and the reason why we require it be parked at a bike rack is that each one of our bike racks have been evaluated for ADA compliance so that it is not obstructing an accessible path of travel.
Well, this comes back in one year.
Six months.
Six months. I know a lot of people that worked really hard on this for a long time, and I'm reticent to change anything, any amendments or anything like that at this time. I appreciate Mr. Hanson's efforts to get some type of equity program established. I think it's time to move forward. I appreciate you to no end, Councilmember Ashby, and I know you're concerned about my district as much as I am and Mr. Warren, but I'm going to go along with the staff recommendation. I think that's what I, so I need to not support his new motion.
If, so, for parliamentary clarification here, Board Member Harris has made a substitute motion that supports the staff recommendation, along with the flexible bike parking and the report back in six months. It would need a second for that motion to continue. If you would like to continue to second that motion, then we can take that vote. If you do not second that motion, that motion will die, and then we'll go back to the first motion, which was from Board Member Hanson here. Would you like to continue, would you like to continue your second on the motion?
That is so smooth. That's really good. No, I do not wish to.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Seeing none, that motion dies. Thank you, Mr. Harris, for your attempt. We're going to go back to the speakers' list. Board Member Harris, would you like to speak?
No.
Good deal. Board Member Hanson, would you like to speak?
I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mr. Carr.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Carr, the reason for reducing the first-year fee from 25 cents to 10 cents, but then also providing the flexible infrastructure option, was to equalize those out. Most of the money that's going to be used is really going to be to build these racks, to design them and deploy them, and I believe that by lowering the costs of the program, we'll actually equalize sooner. Staff didn't have time to evaluate that, but I believe we would still be on the same cost-recovery track, and I don't hate, I hate to sort of second-guess you, but that was the whole purpose of the two pieces. I don't believe that we'll see operators come here in the first year if we keep that 25 cent fee. So Jump will continue to operate under their old permit. I don't think we'll see new operators come because they've been very clear that that 25 cent fee is a disincentive. I think that what we could do when we come back in six months or in 12 months is to reevaluate that fee, and if we need to raise it, that would be the time to do it. So 10 cents now doesn't mean we can't do 25 cents later. It just means that we've created an open door for operators to come here, and the flexible infrastructure gives us a chance to not lose money building racks and delivering them in places where they're not going to be used. So that's the whole idea.
I was just wondering your motion.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what happened, but...
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Hanson. Before I move on to Board Member Ashby, I'm going to, since I seconded your motion, I'm going to put in this request here that the city staff pursue the partnership with Secog to realize some of the outstanding funds from the original bike share program and commit those resources to increase bike parking in neighborhoods that aren't well-served by bike parking. And that way, and most of these neighborhoods are in the disadvantaged communities. So that'll be, that is the, I'll take that as, I'll put that as a direction for the second, rather than writing it all in the language. We're going to go ahead and go to Board Member Ashby, then I have Board Member Jennings and Board Member Shanier. Board Member Ashby.
So first of all, great, great discussion of the council. Again, thank you for letting me be a part of it. I want to be clear that, for me, this isn't the hill to die on, right? If it's going to pass, it's great. What I really like is the six-month comeback because hopefully I'm wrong, and in six months, you can all say, you were totally wrong, Angelique, and that would be fantastic. And if I'm right, then we can make some adjustments and figure out how to do better and make sure we don't leave these communities behind. And I think that's why Councilmember Carr and Warren have some, you know, hope in there. I do want to ask this question, just because I don't think the opportunity will be here. Are Uber, I'm sorry, Jump, Lime, and Bird still here? Would the three of you come forward for just a second? This is a quick question, but it's been posed at least three times tonight.
We could have the representatives from the three companies come up.
Yeah, that's all three of them right there, I think.
Thank you.
So the question would be, and I don't want to put you, well, I am putting you on the spot, so that would be a lie for me to say I'm not about to, but just from a standpoint of operating outside of the urban core, I just wanted to, we're all talking about what we think you would do as a business, right? And how this decision would affect whether or not one of the three of you will choose to go into these areas. And so quickly, I would love to hear the answer from each of you as to like how you would make that business decision and whether or not it makes sense for you. So Jump, right? Yep?
Yes, ma'am. Awesome here with Uber, Jump. I think two things to consider when you move into less dense, more suburban areas are, one, there's less density, so you're likely to see lower ridership on a daily basis, as well as the more disparate, spread-out areas are going to require more staff resources to actually recharge and rebalance those bikes, to make sure they're distributed appropriately and actually achieving, you know, your reliability gains. If you think about in the urban core around Councilmember Hanson's district, you open up your app, and on a given day, you may find a bike or scooter a block away. That's likely to, you know, lead to more consistent use, where people can then rely upon that being there. That's just more difficult to achieve when you get into more sprawled-out suburban areas. So I think one thing that could be helpful is a lower fee or a lower upfront annual fee, where that sort of marginal investment becomes less onerous if you think about the expansion of an additional resource there.
Okay.
On behalf of Lime, from our perspective, you know, I think your business intuition is correct. It's going to cost more to serve these areas, to do the restaging every single morning, deploy out a team, and I think what we had, you know, the feedback that we provided during this process was understanding that there are lower fees in the opportunity zones, but yet still, you know, overall, with the fees being what they are, I think with the motion that's on the table right now, certainly made a difference for us and a difference for us to want to come into the market. But again, I think we do foresee challenges in serving these areas because of still some of those costs despite the discount in the opportunity zone. And I think, you know, part of that is seeing kind of where the data is and understanding that, you know, you have kind of this estimate of what this elaborate parking infrastructure would be, and I don't know if there's anything to sort of inform Sacramento at this point in time on, you know, where that infrastructure should be positioned outside of the core or even in areas within the core. So I think we're looking forward to what this six-month look-back could be once we deploy and are able to analyze what ridership is, and then at that point in time, we can, you know, hopefully help the city and assist in directing sort of where ridership is, where the need is, where the demand is. But we do certainly see challenges in that space, and, you know, fee reductions can help alleviate that.
Thank you. Ms. Priego.
Hi, Alicia Priego, on behalf of Bird. I don't want to belabor the concerns from our other peer vendors, but I think when we entered into this discussion with staff and with the city, there was an expectation that we would serve underserved communities and are, you know, have been doing so in other cities. So I think that, you know, of course, the help with the motion and, you know, looking at the flexible parking all helps to make the business pencil out, and of course, you know, as part of that, we see kind of our responsibility to make sure that we're in those needed areas.
Great, thank you. Ms. Ashby.
Oh, it's great, thank you. I appreciate the answers. I have the same concern. Sounds like they have serious concerns with moving out into those areas in terms of business perspective, but that they're willing to look at what happens over the next six months, too. I suspect that we won't be in those areas in six months, but they will come back in six months and tell us what it would take for us to get them there. So I guess we'll deal with it then.
Thank you. Board Member, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I'll be quick because I think we belabored this point long enough tonight. I appreciate the staff for the work that they've done. Councilmember Hanson, I appreciate the work that you've done and the proposal that you have on the table to move the price down from 25 cent to 10 cent. I do think that's a model that will allow us, if there's any chance of getting to the outlining areas, I think that is the opportunity for us to be able to do that, even though it may delay the cost recovery. And I'm not convinced that it will. I, too, believe that the more activity will also allow more money coming in. So I'm in support of the motion. I think I want to make sure to understand the six- and the 12-month piece of it, and where will, where will it come back to? Will it come back to the council? Will it come back to a workshop? Where will it come back to so that we can have the kind of discussion that allows us to move the agenda to move outside of the core city and really be able to have the kind of agenda that we're having tonight, which would probably be better suited for a workshop as opposed to a council meeting? as opposed to a council meeting? So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that and we can make that decision tonight, if that's possible.
Board Member Jennings, I'm going to go to Board Member Hanson, and I think the recommendation is that we return back to the council through a workshop format.
So, so I would say this is one of the best conversations about mobility that we've had in a very long time, elevating, I think, the concerns of all the different parts of the city in ways that only a transportation geek like me could enjoy. How we do that, I don't necessarily like to micromanage that, but we have our 2:00 meetings now, once a month, which is a workshop format. And I would say if that's where the council wants it to go, the city manager is listening, and I think that's a great place to continue the conversation. I also know that probably within six months, we'll have the update on CACOG. And we did ask very specifically to the staff, the board item that approved the resources said bike share, and so we just need a minor amendment to allow the shared rideables to be considered for this. So I think that's something that we can raise, but we'll, we'll have an update probably within six months on all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Jennings, does that satisfy your question?
It does, and I strongly believe that the, the format for the 2:00 meetings is the best format for this. I would strongly encourage staff to have all of the vendors here so that we can have discussions with them to make sure that they understand the opportunities that we see within our districts, so that we can make sure that they see those as well. I think we know our districts better than anyone. And so therefore, I would love the opportunity to take them out for a ride through my district so they can see the opportunities that they may not have seen so far. Because you're right, the market will drive where, in fact, they will put these bikes, these, these transportation models. So I would love that opportunity. I'd love to have the opportunity to come together in a workshop, and I am in support of the motion that's on the table.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Mr. City Manager, does, are, since you are responsible for setting the agenda, do you concur with that request?
Absolutely. So I'll work with staff to make sure that happens and get scheduled for a 2:00.
If the motion prevails, then, then thank you. Board Member Shanir.
Thank you. Really quickly, this is not something that I think the council should participate in, but once you decide how you, where you're going to put the racks and how you're going to decide if you, if you have actually 40% less physically on them, would love to get a memo from you, I'm sure my colleagues would as well, on what, how you're making those decisions.
Great, thank you very much. I want to thank all of our, all of our city staff and all of the community members who participated, and thank you for this conversation to my colleagues. The only, this is why I don't want to be mayor, because I'd like to be able to punch up earlier than, than waiting for the entire conversation. One, I think it's critical that we pursue what the revenue that was left over from the initial bike share program, and if we can use that to help incentivize in locations and particularly underserved areas. Most of our, our residential communities, particularly in the south area, District 2, 8 and 6, all of them were not built with, with large numbers of bike racks. So I think ensuring that we can get those resources and work with our city staff so that there are good places for them to, to park. I know from myself, our personal experience in District 6, originally, there was, I got more complaints about Jump Bike not being available further south than I did about them to begin with. And since their inception, I've seen the service area continue to encroach further south because the demand has been increasing further south. And there is a very large census tract in my council district where many, many of the community members there don't own vehicles because they can't afford it. The rideshareable option is a much more affordable option for them to get to a bus stop. Sometimes they have to walk two miles to get to a bus stop. And, and for them, if they have to buy a car, that's a car payment, insurance, gas, maintenance, and, you know, God forbid you get into an accident, the additional costs that are associated with that. I think finding an alternative form of transportation that isn't the, as expensive as owning a vehicle allows people for economic mobility, not just motion mobility. I also am very concerned and I want to keep an eye on, on how we look at bike parking and also send a strong message to the industry about managing and working with your clients and customers about how your, your customers respond in the use of, of bike parking. I was there the, the week of the deployment in San Diego with my newborn son, and I couldn't get around with his stroller. So let alone someone who has, is in a wheelchair or in another motorized device to get around, you know, it can be a significant challenge. So I think the fact that the city is moving prudently is important, but there, there's the trade-offs when you're looking at something new. I want to thank Councilmember Hanson for working with me. I may have sounded a little discombobulated or maybe not coherent when I was trying to make my arguments in law and legislation, but I was very passionate about the issue of equity and making sure that this becomes not just serving the core, but how do we expand outside the core? And I think the product that we've gotten here with our staff listening to that input and also looking at the balance of the pricing structure, because I am concerned that if, if the barrier to entry is too high, the focus will only be on the core and not in the communities that need it for economic mobility as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and, and actually call the question, and I appreciate the, the, the conversation here. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes? One, two, three, four, five, eight to one.
Seven.
Oh, oop, my apologies. Eight to one. Seven to one. Late evening.
No, eight to one.
Yeah, no, eight to one. Thank you very much, everyone, for that conversation. We still have more business to discuss today. If we can have our staff prepare for item, I believe we're on 21.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. I am Ryan Dodge of the Community Development Department. This is in regards to the Transit Oriented Development Ordinance, which the City Council approved on December 11, 2018, went into effect on January 10, 2019. So here tonight for two purposes, really. One of it is a technical cleanup, just a minor change, amending the ordinance that exists right now, make it nice and clean. And the second really is to report back to you, which was your request when you approved this in December, to come back the first quarter of 2019, so here we are. So we, we, at the, the December City Council meeting and also the Planning and Design Commission meeting prior to that, we had a lot of stakeholders come out, in particular from North Sacramento and industrial parks, and expressed concerns that this, that their areas are definitely different than most of the city. So that was definitely one concern that we heard. The other was our methodology for measuring the distance from light rail stations. And as a reminder, what the ordinance was, was looking at particular land uses in some zones within, within either a quarter mile or a half mile of a light rail station. And so there was a sentiment among some stakeholders that our methodology really was one size fits all, and it was as a crow's class. So we conducted outreach with three industrial parks in Districts 2 and 3, Cannon, Erickson and Johnston, and invited folks, mostly the stakeholders from the Planning and Design Commission meeting back in November, as well as the City Council meeting. And we held these meetings, listened to them. For the most part, what we heard is that these industrial parks really lack the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that would help encourage transit-oriented development to begin with, as well as neighborhood amenities, really places people want to go to. So based on the feedback that we heard at this time, we wanted to discuss and propose to you two different ways of addressing these, these concerns that we heard. Part of this would be this, this map that I put up here, is taking a look at how we measure the, the distance from light rail stations. And this is something that would be of particular interest to the Johnston Industrial Park, but it would be something that we would apply to all light rail stations. So as a reminder, the way it works now is that we have these circles here, here's a quarter mile, here's a half mile. We say any use within those is essentially subject to the Transit Oriented Development Ordinance. The proposed alternative that, that we're proposing to you would be to actually look at the actual distance that folks walk or bike to. And so, as an example, this area here, this is all a quarter mile, it would say, as exists right now, all properties or land uses are subjected to it. The red are the actual properties that are within a quarter mile walking or biking distance. The blue is the half mile. So as you can see here, we have 60, St. Albion 160, then we have the four light rail stations, we have Globe, Arden del Paso, Royal Oaks, and then Swanston to the east. And so, as you can see here, the Johnston Industrial Park, using this methodology, the Transit Oriented Development Ordinance would not even apply to those areas because they are not within even a half mile, even though portions are technically within a quarter mile as a crow flies, but walking distance, none of it's even within this whole half So the other proposed solution would be to create a new zone entirely for other areas. In particular, it could be applied to industrial areas located within a quarter mile or half mile walking distance, in particular Cannon and Erickson. So a potential new zone like this would allow uses by right instead of a conditional use permit for things such as manufacturing uses, also multi-unit dwellings, commercial and office uses. So the idea here is proposing these two things that address these three industrial parks. Our, our plan is to go to the Planning and Design Commission, as well as the Law and Legislation Committee, and have workshops to really work through the details, and then following that, potential adoption of a new ordinance in the summer. So once again, we are here tonight for the two reasons. This is an action item, a public hearing. First is a technical cleanup to the existing ordinance. Staff recommends adopting an ordinance, amending Section 1722110, 1722210, 1722310 and 1722410 of the Sacramento City Code relating to manufacturing, service and repair in the industrial zones. And secondly, staff seeks direction from the City Council on the proposed framework for a new ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no members of the public signed up to speak, so I'll also request a motion. We just, do we have, do we have one that made it in now? Oh, just made it in. Make a time. Okay, we've got one member of the public who wishes to speak. Mr. Dury.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Ryan Dury with Pacific Neon Company. I've been following this process through and through for quite some time and appreciate all your work as well as staff. And actually, I was taking part in one of the focus groups they had, along with a few of us over at Cannon Industrial Park, and just want to say we really appreciate their efforts and what was mentioned, and are in very strong support of what the recommendation is. So I just want to make that point clear, that the manufacturers do appreciate their work and are in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Since there are no more members of the public signed up to speak, I'll also ask for a motion to open and close the public hearing. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd be happy to make a motion to open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Publicly moved and seconded.
Adopt the cleanups as stated by staff and then offer this direction. When this ordinance comes back, it's very important to not use the, as the crow flies radius and, it's important to use the walking distance because that solves an awful lot of the issues. As we adopted the TOD ordinance, we were doing carve-outs for very specific areas because there were different geographical needs and different business needs. It's very hard to make a TOD ordinance that actually relates to every single condition along a rail line, as we found out with these different industrial areas. So if we adopt the walking model rather than the crow flies model, it'll solve an awful lot of the problems. Otherwise, we're forced to go by a station-by-station carve-out, which would be a very long and tedious process. So as we pursue this ordinance moving forward, that's my decided direction, and I think my motion is clear.
Great, thank you very much. It's been moved by Board, Councilmember Harris and seconded by Councilmember Warren with direction. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I think the technical cleanup is fine. I would have not liked staff to package the Attachment 5 framework. I think the framework still is in need of a lot of work. We got praised nationally for adopting our TOD ordinance. I think potentially the framework has the ability over time to undo what took 20 years to do. And so I won't support the framework that's in front of us, but I will support, even though it's, I'm going to vote for the motion because it's for the ordinance, but I think the framework has a significant amount of challenges. We don't take into account the transitioning nature of some of these places, so it perpetuates by its nature an industrial use that is not transit-oriented. And so as the framework evolves and comes back through our processes, I think we really have to refine and think more broadly about our duties as fiduciaries to the city, but also as trustees to these communities, to make sure that we're encouraging positive growth and development, that we're not locking in a land condition. Because a lot of times when we grandfather in the way that this talks about this framework, we perpetuate these conditions for multiple generations. Because as land becomes more scarce, people lock down in these places. Sims Metal is a great example in Mr. Harris's district. It is within half a mile of the La Valentina Light Rail Stop. It's within half a mile of the proposed Dos Rios Light Rail Stop, and they will not move to save their lives, and nothing in our land use policy gives us a chance. They will continue to salvage and wreck and pollute there as long as they possibly can because our land use entitles them to do that. And this particular framework, I think, is a, is a real step back from the leadership we demonstrated in December. And so I, I think you are hearing me and my particular position. If the will of the council is different as this evolves, then I'm, I'm happy to continue to advocate for what I believe, but I will support the motion tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to just as well thank the staff for listening to some of the concerns of our valued business owners that would, would be impacted by some of these districts, and particularly in District 2, where you have some very unique situations that probably wouldn't have lent itself to the earlier iteration of our, of this new staff recommendation. And so thank you for working with the staff, I mean, working with the District 2 business owners and taking their comments to heart and then making the appropriate adjustments that were reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember, for your comments. Are there, are there any members signed up to speak? There are no members of the public signed up to speak. We've got a motion to open and close the public hearing and a second with direction. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed? Measure passes. Okay, that, that is our, concludes our public hearing. Now we've got an item on the discussion calendar, item number 22, from our Utilities Department.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Michelle Carey, and I'm the Water Supervising Engineer for Department of Utilities. And this evening, I have a brief update on our water meter program. Just a brief background, in 2004, Assembly Bill 2572 mandated that water meters be installed on all water service connections. The city of Sacramento deadline was the, was January 1st of 2025. In 2015, the City Council approved the acceleration of water meter installations to be completed by the end of 2020. This is four years ahead of the state mandate deadline. This is four years ahead of the state mandate deadline. The Accelerated Water Meter Program, or AWMP, was developed to implement this directive. In 2016, City Council approved an alternative contractor selection process. It's the Multiple Award Task Order Contracts, or METOC. This was a contractor selection process developed by the Department of Defense. This allowed the city to select contractors based on criteria that determines the best value to the city. Criteria includes not just price, but other factors, such as management and delivery approach, demonstrated performance on similar projects, customer service, and commitment to the use of local labor. So, an update on the AWMP program. The city at the end of March was 91% metered. There are roughly just over 12,000 meters remaining to be placed. The estimate of water distribution mains to be replaced as part of this program was approximately 60 miles. Half of that number, 30 miles of main, have been placed to date. The estimated program cost is $243.5 million, and to date, we have spent close to $124 So communication is crucial, especially with this project. It's important that the Accelerated Meter Program have a robust public outreach effort to apprise customers of the program and inform them of construction projects prior to the commencement of construction. We've had open houses before every project. We have ads that were placed in local newspapers with all of our outreach materials branded with the Meters Matter logo. We have one last open house that's coming in this May. And we have a very diverse customer base, and we have found from polling that they wanted to receive information in a variety of ways. So customers are receiving information on Facebook and Instagram. We have an email designated specifically for the water meter program. We have a phone line that is specifically for the program. We have a mobile app that can be downloaded for phones. And we also have been mailing information to customers. And we also have contractors that are notifying customers several times before construction comes into their neighborhood. We've also set goals for the program with regards to customer response time or complaint resolution time, and I'm happy to report that we have been meeting and exceeding the goals that we have set. As part of the Accelerated Meter Program, a local hire criteria was developed, and contractors' efforts to comply with the 20% goal were considered during the contractor selection process. To date, the contractors have employed local hire staff within priority zip codes or within the SHRA Promise Zone areas to the tune of 26.5%. This equates to over 100,000 local hire labor hours. Projections of local hire hours remaining for the program are approximated at close to 110,000. So this cumulative amount of over 210,000 local hire hours for the program equates to over $8 million in pay through the local hire program. Contractors working on the program have done a great job recruiting workers from the local hire areas, as well as training and retaining them. So this concludes the brief update, and I'm open to answering questions or listening to your comments.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We have two councilmembers signed up to speak. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak? Madam Clerk?
I have one speaker on this item, Mr. McWorthy.
All right, Mr. Worthy, you are our only speaker. If you would come forward, please.
People, the water meter, and I'm still disappointed about it, because water meters wasn't put in to save water, it's to price water, and you will find that out soon. Now, there's nothing, what the water meters was putting in, that's still the old galvanized line, it's in many places. Got to dig up right there again, hook it back up. That should have been studied, instead of jumping to bonds on when you increase the price of water. A tenant shouldn't have to pay for water. See, you run things, a pricing, they run people away from this town. Okay, now, when we look at the idea for water, to save water, we don't have no idea to save the water when it rains. A 36-inch steel pipe, a 36-inch plastic pipe can be set up at Looms Dam and run for miles. You got to get, put it together, and you got water. When you need water, you pump it out. Same thing to American River, coming to Poston, to pump it out. Run to the banks of the river, and less construction to hold it, and it will help the levees, which would be full of water. You could do eight to 10 of them, and you only have to dig down to raise them. And when that water come in, and pump it out. All you got to do is set up the pumps, instead of waiting on the snow, pump the water when it raining, crazy. Pump the water when it raining. Top to Pete Nam, Pete Nam is open, Pete Nam was in Saicla when water running when I was down there near Columbus. But we don't have people here in this city that understand. Do you realize I paid $150 a month over in water, and I spoke here twice, and I had to go over to the department and show them, and the people said, "Thank you." I told them, "Why, we're not asking for reimbursement. We just saying you are ignorant in your administration on a computer. Common sense." That's all you got to do, is deal with common sense. And deal with common sense and try to deal with the price of this water going to go up. Save some water so you got some water instead of hope it going to melt on the snow.
Worthy, thank you for your comments. Your time is expired. We'll move to the council now.
You got it in the plastic pipe. You go back, keep it put in, turn it back into the river. That's all you had to do.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Ashby. I just wanted to say a couple things real quick. When, in 2014, we began getting significant complaints from our residents about this program, the News and Review did investigations, there are TV stories, we realized we completely had to restart our approach. And it was Mr. Chan's predecessor, John Shirey, trained as an engineer in consultation with the council and the community, that we also faced with a drought, decided to accelerate the program, but redesign it. In many ways, that both saved money, but allowed us to move faster. And you mentioned the bidding process changes. That allowed us to get better contractors, who didn't just shut off people's water and dig up an alley without telling anybody, but allowed us to use best value. And it clearly, both through local hire and other stuff, has turned into a tremendous success. So Dan, I want to thank you and Bill for all the work that you've done on the leadership side. The outcomes here are much better than I think we could have even hoped for a few years ago. And when I look at the detail, we are so close to finishing this program ahead of what was our original schedule, and in 2015, I believe the original schedule to complete was 2024.
That's correct.
And now the original completion, now the completion date is?
December 31st, 2020.
One more?
We have a year and a half.
Okay.
A little over a year and a half.
So that's a significant, very significant advancement. Also, it removed the stigma from the city that we were going to fight tooth and nail against every water meter we could. It helped to get us past the history of not only our own resistance to doing what most of the world does, which is to meter the water you use, and that changed behavior around landscaping. And we've, thanks to Mr. Gera's predecessor, prioritized cash for grass as we moved to shift landscaping behaviors, or river-friendly landscape, or whatever you want to call it. It has completely changed the culture of our Utilities Department, our consumers, and I think made us better for it. And so, I just think this is a modeled program now. And for all those people who say we're not responsive when they complain, it is clear we have been responsive here. I don't have to tell you how unsettling it was to get complaints about gas mains or pipes getting broken during the contracting process and having a lot of other things happen. I feel confident and I trust the department now that we are on the right track, and I think other cities will look to this project and say, "We can do this better. We can do it like Sacramento." And that is a testament to the quality of staff and just how you embraced the feedback the public gave and were able to turn this around. So congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilmember Hanson for his very brief comments. They were all spot-on.
You weren't going to thank me for beating them up three years, four years ago to get this product?
You know, staff has really stepped up the game on a very difficult project, and you've met the council's expectations in a really dramatic way. The purveying of information is tremendous. Our consultant onboard has been immeasurably helpful, so I give them thanks as well. We're on the right road. I think we can probably conclude in 2020. You know, like many projects, sometimes there's a little slippage, but we've achieved a tremendous amount, and so the Department of Utilities gets a gold star.
Very much. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a quick question. The priority hire zip codes, how are we verifying the numbers that the contractors providing?
We have a labor compliance program that...
What program?
A labor compliance program, and information, personal information, is submitted, and we are, we've asked the contractors to submit forms on their local hire employees that have their information, that we can verify what, where they live.
So they give you a form, and you, how do you verify it after you get the form?
I believe that we're double-checking with the labor compliance program that we use for all of our capital improvement projects.
I'm still, so the contractor gives you a form, and they say this zip code has been hired. And then what do you do with that?
So, there's a labor compliance program that is utilized whenever we have a contractor that has a contract with Department of Utilities and is working to construct a project. And there's, it's, it's to, it's in conjunction with, I want to say, the Department of Interior with the state. It's a, it's a state-regulated program. It, it looks at, to make sure that the employees of the contractors are being paid the correct benefits, and, and within this software, there's information about each person that is working for a contractor. And so, we can go in and we can take the forms that we get that are submitted by the contractors on, that they have submitted and have said, "These are local hire employees," and then we can go into the labor compliance software and double-check that that is in fact...
They live in those zip codes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. I do want to thank Councilmember Carr for being steadfast in this program that has, and all of our programs. He's also encouraged other special, our dependent special districts to look at how we provide equity in our contracting. Thank all of our city staff. This was a receiving file for the update of the water meter program. I appreciate the photo of the Tahoe Park Town Hall, where we had water meters program. And for those listening, if you missed the slide before, metersmatter.org, where you can get information about when your water meter is going to be installed, or questions, or you can call, if you're old school like myself, 916-808-5870. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to council comments, ideas, questions, maybe one, two, three reports for anybody. Any council comments? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor. Mr. City Manager, there was a recent decision by the Ninth District Court of Appeals. It was a case of Santa Monica versus the short-term rentals platforms. It was a very significant decision, and as a result, I think that we should bring back our short-term rentals ordinance for further revision. I've had a long chat with staff in our city attorney's office about how that decision can benefit us in terms of regulating our platforms, collecting TOT, and making sure that operators in the City of Sacramento come into compliance with our ordinance. So I'd ask that that comes back to law and legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. We'll go ahead and put that on the law and legislation log. We're going to go on to city manager's report, since there are no more councilmembers signed up to speak. City Manager, do you have any new, anything to add to your report?
No, there's no updates.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Public comment matters not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda?
Yes, Vice Mayor Gera, I have nine people signed up to speak. The first is Mary Louise Blazevich, Sally Shapiro, then McWorthy.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the, our rules and conduct for matters not on the agenda, public comment? Thank you.
Hi. Is she going to read something, sir?
Yeah. Do you want me to go read it?
Yeah.
I was going to let you go first.
She's getting together already.
I just wanted to remind the members of the public that we're to address the council. Should complete the speaker slip, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules or procedure outlined decorum expected in the chambers can be found on our website, copies in the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not, immediately stop the presiding officer or direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, sir and councilmembers. My name is Mary Louise Blazevich, and I'm here regarding the homeless situation, and I know that I don't have to educate any of you about what is going on. My suggestion is, and I've already, not emailed, but text to our governor, that we open, reopen the hospitals. I just did a little brief search there and found out that the hospitals are still empty. I believe the problem with the hospitals in the past was misuse, misconduct by the employees, and so there was more harm done than good. And as I suggested to our governor, this could be a viable way of assisting this community if we had people that went in and checked. Do surprise visits, to be sure that these patients are being treated in a humane way. This, to me, ladies and gentlemen, is a human rights violation. I have two Purple Heart veterans in my family, and it's tough. And I appreciate the education and the expertise that you show here as you address the community's needs. And if there's anything I could personally do, it will come to me through the media some way. We just need a lot of, a lot of help. We need a lot of help to reconcile this tragedy that we are all faced with. And so, once again, thank you so much for what you do here.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
The next speaker is Sally Shapiro, then McWorthy, and then Foundation of Future Success.
Sally Shapiro from Kennedy Gallery. Remix of our Nobel Peace Prize winner, Bob Dylan. Dear landlord, please don't put a price on our soul. Our burdens are heavy, our dreams have been put on parole. When that steamboat whistle blows, we're gonna show you how to give. Why you been watching us suffer on your streets? The laws give equal rights for us to live. The laws give equal rights for us to live. Dear landlord, please don't dismiss our case. We're not gonna argue. Just wanna live in a beautiful place. You know, each of us got a right to a home on this earth. It don't just belong to you. And you don't deserve to make a literal killing out of every greedy thing that you do.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Foundation of Future Success, and then Pastor Gainsborough.
Thank you for coming this evening. Mr. Worthy.
A few Tuesday nights ago, to what went on in here, flipped me back sometime, forty seven years. I saw what went on here was the same thing reason Martin King died, his shoes on. Black folks going behind closed doors with people that's in the legislation and making decisions and come back and tell black folks, "This is what we're gonna do." I see some more people die of that same garbage. Nobody in here that night had a consent, or nobody, to serve as a leader. Your consent here was to represent. The church is consent of membership. The NAACP is a consent of membership. The Urban League is a consent of membership. Black people have never had a consent of leadership in this country. It's killing this people. And we coming down to something that, I'm gonna put this up, come back again here, we right back here in April, 26th of April. All young black men and black women and Hispanics, call and I'll beat your doughnuts with sound. I want you to switch your vote this time. I came right here and told you Donald Trump was going. He's gone. After see ballots, you're gonna see thousands of illegal people. Same thing, you're gonna see thousands of people vote here that's not even a citizen in this country. Let's go economics under Donald Trump. Independent equality, people. Socialism is slavery. That's slavery, people. I talked about, I got information, I talked about forty years ago, right here. Black folks still think they can make it in vote. You cannot make it in voting. Go to Chicago. When Fox is what the position he holds, you got to have those positions behind closed doors because you're dealing with a rigged government, people. And it's always going to be rigged until you stand up and go to war.
Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Councilmember Hanson.
Since Mr. Worthy mentioned Chicago, I can't help but say today, Chicago broke a historic watershed moment in electing Lori Lightfoot, the first LGBT woman of color to lead a major city in America. She was elected tonight overwhelmingly by the people of Chicago. And that is worth celebrating.
By the LGBT in Chicago, that boy with the...
Congratulations to Chicago. Madam Clerk, can you please read the next person?
Our next speaker is Foundation of Future Success, then Pastor Gainsborough, then Anna Castillo.
Excuse me, sir. If you could speak at the microphone.
In the heart of the city, there ain't no peace this side of town.
We can't hear you unless you're at the podium.
And the other sort of kind of mind is, YG, run me my money. All right, so my two minutes started ten seconds ago. Let me lay down a presentation one time. All right, so the two homes picture here, this was, this was a sorority house and...
Hold on, excuse me, sir. One second. One second. Mr. Shanir, hold on one second.
Can my two minutes start over?
No, no, I'm asking if we could give the speaker a full two minutes, since he hadn't started.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold on one moment here. Madam Clerk, could you please, at the request of Councilmember Shanir, we're going to start over here. I know he's got his son here. Okay.
Ain't no peace this side of town.
Okay, so are you ready?
All right, so my name is Patrick Blackshire, founder of Foundation of Future Success, 501(c)(3) charity, college fund charity. Our intentions are to help people be successful in education and entrepreneurship through seven areas of philanthropy. If you need information, we can show you the details of how we help the community. The community that's most in need is Oak Park. Which one of you represented, Oak Park, 95817, 95820? Jay Schreiner, you will be working closely with me, Patrick Blackshire. The mayor himself has said we have a project with the city. So we've paid over a thousand to help people have, have running water. We've given out water bottles. We slaked the thirst, fed the hungry, even housed, housed people as much as we could. The city took three houses, two of them are pictures, and then headquarters where my dad grew up, on 8th and 44th. There's two CKs in my name, Oak Park, California. My parents made it Oak Park. I'm from Sacramento, a native. Any of y'all natives in Sacramento? I see no hands raised. Why, show your hands. Anyone native in Sacramento? Why, I am. The city took three houses from me. I don't own a home now. That makes me homeless. If I don't own a home, I'm homeless. The city owed me. That brings me to the song referred, "YG, run me my money." That means when the next NOFA comes in, make sure city staff partners with me and my foundation, my foundation and I, to carry on the mission to help people be successful in education and entrepreneurship through the NOFA funds coming in, not being sued by, like referred by Senator affiliates. Actually partner me in so that we can be functioning as a charity, functioning to help the community where my heart is, where I'm from. And in good intentions, I could be very, very, much more expressive of my anger. I'm completely ecstatic about, about the way I was treated. Houses taken from me and my children and my family and my charity. I'm gonna need some retribution. That's why I'm here tonight, and I need your outreach, contact, replies to the emails. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackshire. Councilmember Shanir.
I just want to say, I just heard from my folks upstairs that we've scheduled a meeting to talk with you, so we'll be...
I ain't got word of you. Mayor Johnson, he was gonna speak, he was gonna have me back there. Y'all real busy moving things like water.
Thank you, sir. Sir, please have a seat. Thank you, sir. Sir, please have a seat. We'll follow up with you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Leave it, leave it. We're good. I think you left your cell phone on the podium, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, then Anna Castillo, then Jade Nicole.
Mr. Gainsborough.
Vice Mayor and Council, it's good to be with you. Overhead. The headline two weeks ago on Sunday, the top was "The Culture of Silence," it talked about domestic violence. Bottom right-hand corner of the front page of the SACB, the capital city of the world's seventh-largest economy, California. Bottom corner said, "Problem Could Become a Crisis." Front page of section B, Bretton, wrote, "The federal Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled unconstitutional outlawing people sleeping in public places. A public place as City Hall, which you passed an ordinance saying that people could not sleep here unless there is a place to move them to. You are risking a federal appeals court violation. I will personally bring lawyers if you keep moving people off of here. It was good they were here tonight, not at nine o'clock at night till six in the morning. You cannot move them if you don't have a place, but moving right ahead." Your mayor has the courage to not only have, and you all joined it, to approve a winter triage shelter for 200 people, but now he's leading you to have eight districts, all with 100 triage shelter. But one of the districts, District Eight, is opposed to the finance, saying that $400,000 times 15 months is $6 million. But four years ago, when I started coming here pleading for the lost, 124 people, 124 people, 124 people, not 200 were helped by the triage center, all 600 were helped. 124 people, you are guilty. You are guilty. You are guilty of the deaths...
Since your time is complete.
...of 124 homeless dying on the streets in Sacramento.
Mr. Gainsborough, thank you for your comments. They've been recorded. Thank you.
Be a world-class city. Face those deaths.
Clerk, please call the next name.
Next speaker is Anna Castillo, then Jade Nicole, then Nikki.
Ms. Castillo.
Anna Castillo here. Jade Nicole, Nikki.
Jade Nicole.
Nikki is our next speaker.
Nikki.
And then our final speaker is Robert Copeland.
I think she's coming up here. Good evening.
Maybe for y'all. It's been a hard couple days for folks outside. So much work that you're doing. You know, this is so many, so many capacities you're showing to be... Yeah, y'all, you should let him film. I don't know why the cop is in this guy's face. Maybe you could exert some direction or control and let him. So, you know, so much ability or capacity to be responsive to community complaints, to hear concerns, to do something about it. Here we are, you know, thousands, thousands of people on the street in Sacramento and, you know, here right in your district, right in this building that Sacramento taxpayers paid for, and some of the only shelter from the rain that this area has to offer. We have decided, y'all have decided, to pass sit lie, to go ahead and follow that legacy of torture and displacement, of making sure that people don't have a place to sit or lie down that is sheltered. You know, I spent some time, I don't know if any of you guys have spent that time, to like talk with folks about what it means for them to be moved or what they need. Some folks said, "They should have given us this notice when they passed it 30 days ago. Then we would have had 30 days to plan and get ready for this." Some people said, "I got more on my goals list completed in the last three months since we haven't had to move than I've done in the last three years on the street." That's what community, that's what stability, that's what having a place for your belongings, having people to watch them, these kind of things that you often deride when you talk about the problems associated with a tent city or the community of people living outside. But the fact is, these people are struggling to survive every day. Talked to one woman who's number two on the Salvation Army waitlist. She said, "I'm making avenues and doing everything I can." You know, and it's time for y'all to add value to their lives instead of constantly, constantly disrupt them with your police forces, with your ordinances. You have tools to make things better, and you literally make the choices to make things work.
Thank you, Nikki, for your comments.
Thank you for moving forward on your shelter.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And our final speaker this evening is Robert Copeland.
Mr. Copeland, good evening. And, sir, I'm going to have you, you can, you're welcome to videotape from your seat, but we want to make sure that that's reserved for the media and the press.
I am media.
Okay. Sir, if you could please have, if you can please have a seat, sir.
Can I hear me?
Registered?
I have not, not to my knowledge.
Sorry, sir. Did he have his media card? Okay, thank you very much for showing your media card. Make sure you show it to the officer before you do.
That's not necessary, according to the United States Constitution.
Sir, we're going to have to ask you to move, please, if you're not, if you're not going to just work as your media. Okay, good. Thank you.
You spoke to me, I responded. Thank you.
Mr. Copeland.
Four weeks ago, I was at the city council meeting, and people were waiting outside when there were seats available inside. Who was in charge of that? I find that unconscionable, and they should be held accountable for that. It was cold rainy weather that day, and they had to listen to the city council outside. And when they, some got inside, they were not allowed to speak because of your rule that if the agenda item or a public comment starts before they get in, you feel like for the speakers, or say they were not able to. They can't speak that time. I find the city council unconscionable, what you did that day. This was a day, March 5th, day after 84 people got arrested. And now as far as housing, when are you going to start building housing for the low-income and extremely low-income people in this town? This city council is a failure, a total failure. Get on the ball. And once everyone is going to have a plan for the homeless shelters in their district, one, I don't think, one, two, four, six, seven or eight has one. So what's your plan? What is your plan to improve the condition of this all your resident in Sacramento? I don't think I'm hearing anything. I'm hearing crickets. You know what? Talking to the city council like talking to a brick wall a lot of times. I don't get any solutions or answers from any of you. I mean, really? I mean, if you can't do better, I hope we can replace some of you next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, Mr. Copeland, on the 18th or sooner, will be announcing our site in District Four. And I think you'll be, yes. Not here, but in District Four.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Okay, that concludes our speakers on public comment, and we will adjourn at 7:46.